The chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute, one turn per person. Those given reports are urged to keep the reports less than three minutes and presentations under ten minutes. Please silence all electronic devices. Say that again, please silence all electronic devices. That includes board members. The board will be making a good faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. Please ensure those that are online that your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking. And I will repeat that again. Please ensure your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. And a two thirds vote, which is eight members of this eleven member board, is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to introduction of board members. I can start from my right, go down, and then we'll go online.
Aloha, everyone. My name is John Clark III and I'm serving as the vice chair.
Hi, everyone. Alexander Gauss.
Aloha, Liam Chin.
Hi, John Rogers.
Corey Rosenlee.
Online? Jamaica?
Good evening, Jamaica Cullen.
Trey Gordner, serving as treasurer.
Thank you. Mitchell Trenanis, Chair. Moving on to public safety first responders, we have Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, Captain Mark Miguel from the Ever Beach Fire Station. I'll go and read you folks the statistics for October. We had one structure fire, three wildland or brush fires, three nuisance fires, which are rubbish fires or anything that happens outside a structure or vehicle. Twelve activated alarms without a fire, one hundred and ninety medical calls, one motor vehicle versus pedestrian, seven motor vehicle crash collisions, and no mountain, ocean, or hazardous material incidents. The fire safety tip for this is holiday cooking safety. Keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is a peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third with having nearly twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributor for cooking fires and fire deaths. So the tips we have for you are, one, stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you're cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when you're cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. And if you want a fry, if you want a fried turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. So consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory and do not leave it on the tenant when they use. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Corey, go ahead.
I hope you'll be able to answer this question. I was talking to some neighbors and they were looking at their brush and they would get different notices about what is the buffer zone between homes and brush and how much that needs to be maintained. Do you know what the requirements are when it comes to the maintenance of brush when it comes next to homes?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I like to, it's somewhere in the range between ten to fifteen feet, I'm sure. But I'll get that direct answer for you.
Thanks, because they were hearing everything from thirty to two hundred feet. So that's why.
No, two hundred feet is a little too much.
Okay, okay. So that'd be great if, you know, if you could find out for me, I'd love to get that in.
Yeah, so they'll definitely respond with the answer, but I'm purely guessing it's somewhere recommended.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community? See none? Thank you very much. Thank you for your service and be safe out there.
Can we just email you directly?
You can email the board directly and then I can forward to the whole board. Thank you. Moving on to Honolulu Police Department.
Leave the most honorable chairperson, board members, members of the community. I cooperate with the Honolulu Police Department District, Community Pacing. I do have your stats for October. In October, we had twenty-six motor vehicle thefts, five in our area, twenty-one burglaries, four in our area, one hundred and thirty-nine thefts, twenty-seven in our area, sixteen unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, two in our area. There's a total of three hundred and seventy-five citations issued. There's a total of six thousand four hundred and twenty-one calls for service, one thousand six hundred and fifty-four in our area. The only thing, other thing I have is, I believe Eva Makai is requesting that, oh, put a dollar in the jar. Eva Makai is going to be requesting, are they requesting that the speed limit be reduced in front of the school? I believe there's a sign that says school zone, but the speed limit doesn't drop. It's sturdy, that whole area. We did a sign waving out there this morning and, you know, traffic is, traffic is kind of bad, so, you know, it doesn't, the speed doesn't get too bad when those kids are there, but, you know, instead of it dropping to twenty-five. So I think they're looking at from Kauana Street to Pioli Street. So anything you guys can do to kind of help them out, but, you know, if we can drop that down, that area down to twenty-five, other than just having a school zone ahead kind of thing, kind of helps with that. But that's all I got on that side. If any comments, questions, or concerns.
Any question for the board? We got John Clark and then we got Liam and, oh no, Trey, Liam, and then anybody else?
Thank you for what you do first. Regarding the speed limit and the street, I remember when we went through, you remember about eight years ago, changing the traffic pattern coming out of the school? And that was a real challenge. And I think part of the challenge, anytime you want to do something in front area right there, I'm not sure if that street has been turned over to Seine County yet. So I don't know if Debbie is here to speak on behalf of Eva Gentry. I think she would, she would know that. So that, that's, that would be a big challenge there. But it can be solved here, but I just want to know that would be. And Board Member Gauss had a question. If the speed limit will be twenty-five when school children are present, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, a lot of them have the, the speed limit thirty miles an hour and then school zone, you know, when children are present, the twenty-five mile an hour.
Right.
And I think, I don't think down would be as challenging as getting the people to turn right from that right lane as we were versus, because now it's just the straight away.
Straight away, yeah.
Thanks.
Me, Leo. Okay.
Sorry, well, thanks again for sharing these numbers. A couple months ago, I had inquired about clearance rate data. In the same way, we're interested in to see which crimes are occurring. We're also interested at how many of them are being solved by HPD, what percentage? So you had mentioned at that time, potentially within a few months, you might be able to share that.
Yeah, we, we have a, we have a new district information officer, so we're trying to work with. We actually went from the department doing all of those stats to now it being assigned to the district. We are trying to work things out with that because what happens is, if there's a theft in Eva, but the person gets arrested for a theft in, say, Hawaii Kai, it may clear our theft here, but it's not going to show up as a stat in Eva. So it shows up as a stat as a theft arrest in Hawaii Kai. So we're trying to figure out how we can get all of that information and have it make sense. You know, to be honest, our crime reduction unit and our detectives have been doing a really good job with a lot of great cases, including unfortunately with the homicides we've been having in the, on the west side of the islands. They've actually been pretty quick to find suspects and locate them, so, you know, we can try, you know, it's just, it's just not as easy as, as we wish it could be.
Thanks, yeah, we just want to get an idea and even if it's not as granular as Eva specific, maybe even, you know, a couple of districts, yeah, because I know it's available HPD wide, but if we could just even do it by even a broader area, we'd still be happy to see how things are going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go, John.
Hey, Officer Pagan. So if we, if we wrote a resolution to help with this Eva Makai school slowing down traffic, is there a contact person at Eva Makai?
Jen Welsh. She's the PCNC, Welsh, W E L S C H, I believe. I believe she was going to be writing a letter to Aaron and argue them, the council member, to, to get that on, but, you know, because we're out there with the sign waving today, you know, we're still trying to get that done, so any help we can get would be great. Even, I mean, even with a couple of speed bumps in the area, just to slow people down, kind of like.
So yeah, it's a city street, so that's the hard thing.
Yeah.
Feds are, I mean, the state is doing all the speed bumps.
Yeah.
I got, last month I asked about all the electrical vehicles all over the place, riding on sidewalks, and, you know, our laws, actually, I've been looking over the laws and we have pretty good laws, so I'm just wondering what HPD's philosophy or policy, how they're thinking about this, because it's kind of crazy sometimes.
Yeah. You know, to be honest, the hard part is, you know, when you're looking at giving a ten, eleven, twelve-year-old citation for riding a bicycle. But as far as I know, when there's incidents involving those bikes or electric vehicles, then they are being cited for, you know, say there, there's an accident or within the roadway and stuff like that, then they're being cited for those kind of things. We are, you know, Lima has a family night every month. We go out there and we do talk to the kids about, you know, some of the bicycle laws, the electric bikes and stuff like that. And, you know, it makes it difficult at times when we have others in the community that have large events and you invite all these golf carts that are souped up and everything to these events. It makes it hard when you, when you try to, you know, enforce those laws, but you get these people being invited and stuff like, so, again, it's one of those things that's happened in private communities with the golf carts and it kind of evolved to everywhere and stuff like that, so, yeah.
I, and I don't want everyone to be cited. I just, you know, when I see a ten-year-old without a helmet, I mean, an officer, if an officer could ever stop that ten-year-old and say, hey dude, get off that bike, walk it home, or who's your parents? I mean, I, one time I was, when I lived in Kaimakia, I was riding down Harding Street, fast you'd go through all the lights, five o'clock in the morning, and the police officer pulled me over, he was going to take my bike, and goes, dude, if you don't lock up this bike and walk home, and I was an adult, I was a twenty or something, so, and that was the right thing to do, right? Because I was breaking the law and he did the right thing, so.
Yeah. Well, we are working on it. As, as a unit, we're trying to figure out how we can get the message out better and make a bigger impact with the kids, because, you know, they are going pretty fast.
Liam, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, sorry, one quick follow-up was, you may have already mentioned this in a previous meeting, but on this list of reported incidents, I'm not seeing violent crimes, assault and, and other violent crimes, are they typically not included in these reports?
That you can get from the HonoluluPD.org, the crime mapping. We don't include it, the, the stats that you get on here are island-wide, that we do island-wide for everyone. And the reason why we mostly do these is because these are the ones that we look for trends. You know, assaults, you don't have, it's hard to define a trend for assaults, domestic violence, all the stuff that we used to report. You know, whereas you can find trends with motor vehicle thefts, you know, certain areas, certain times with thefts as well and stuff like that, so. But there are other stats are available on the HonoluluPD.org website.
Would it be a huge ask for you to add those in, though?
Well, we can, we can ask the, the, the command, but again, it's department-wide. It's, it's a department policy that these are the stats that we issue to all boards, and then we direct them to the, the website for further information.
Okay, because trends aside, I do think the community is interested in assaults and violent crime, so, thank you.
Okay, any questions for the community? See none? I get one, real quick one, on, on theft, it went up, you know, it's going up, like you're saying trends, so what is the trend right now in our area? Because we got a hundred and thirty, or twenty-seven in our area out of the one thirty-nine, but what is the trend here that our community can be aware of?
Honestly, the trend is that stores are reporting them, but they're not prosecuting. So that's the biggest issue, is, is when you, when you have these thefts that are occurring and they're reporting it as a theft to document for insurance purposes, but then they don't want to prosecute. People know that, oh, I can go steal from there and if anything, they could tell me I can't come back. And then they don't really care, because if I come back, I can steal anyway, so it doesn't matter. That's, that's one of the biggest issues.
All right. Alex, you got something?
So, thanks, Officer Pagan, and this is probably the most questions we've asked you in a long time. I'm just curious, you know, that, the idea about being able to see trends, I'm just wondering if we're in the, the final year meeting today, I wonder if we could think about something where the final meeting of the year, you know, in the future years that we, or maybe even the first one, we show the whole year? And so we can look at, and, you know, just make it a figure that shows the numbers over time and see if we see trends visually or something, that'd be cool.
Did you want to see something like this for the whole year? Or you wanted to see a little bit more than?
Like, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to give you a lot of work to do, but if you see these numbers and it's something that gets flat, or if we're seeing an increase or a decrease, something that you think would interest the community, I think that'd be really nice, people would probably appreciate that, so.
Okay.
We work on that.
That's a suggestion. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, one more, John.
Apologies. Because I know these are island-wide stats, because I remember it was a huge ask, we used to only get two or three months at a time, and then I asked if we could have six months, and then you guys changed it after, I think about a year, so, so thank you. But we do have a public safety committee, so I think maybe we could work to, you know, maybe create a report and then we just supply it amongst ourselves at the board. We can populate a spreadsheet and then share it in the, in the interim while you're trying to do an annual.
Got it.
Okay, moving on to Weed and Seed, go ahead.
Good evening, Officer Pagan, Honolulu Police Department, Weed and Seed. I just wanted to mention that we did have our fifth anniversary, well, fifth annual legacy luncheon on November second, went very well. Thank you for those that participated, donated, and came out. We did do, again, the sign waving this afternoon, this morning was a Weed and Seed event with Eva Makai. We are working to do a couple more with Lima and Kaimee Loa before the Thanksgiving holiday as well as for, before Christmas holiday. I believe Sergeant Moroka is working on a program. We're trying to get, work with Waikai to do some type of a youth mentoring surf type of thing over there at their, their pool, so we're hoping to get that started soon. But other than that, we're busy. We've got a bunch of Christmas parades coming up, as you guys know. We've got the Kapole, well, the Honolulu City Lights, I believe, on the second, Kapole Holiday following Saturday. Waianae Zat following Saturday, and then Eva's on the following Saturday. So we'll be busy. Holidays coming up again, just be careful, lock up your cars, be aware where you're shopping and stuff like that.
Thank you. Any questions for Weed and Seed? From the board? From the community? Hey, just real quick.
It's because of that honorable person thing.
I just give a shout-out, you know, because this happened when I was at Home Depot. You know the guys, the volunteers that do the ticketing for the handicap? Yeah. Finally got to see one guy, and I was like, finally! And he was ticketing all the guys that was parked in the handicap stalls, and I was like, you know, I got your back, you know, I'm going. But yeah, those guys, you know, they come, they said, like you're saying, they're volunteers, they come out when they can, but, and I was really impressed when, you know, they're out there, and these, these guys are not top-shaped guys, but they're out there, and I just wanted to give a shout-out for them.
Glad you enjoyed it.
Yeah. Thank you very much, and thank you for.
Thanks, man.
Oh, sorry, we got a community member? What's your name and your concern?
Tara Rojas, I just had a quick question and maybe a suggestion. You know, the youth mentoring program sounds awesome. Would it be possible to do it maybe with a different entity in the community and, and/or a different venue other than the Waikai?
Why would we not choose Waikai?
Just because of the issues, you know, with the water and the controversy.
Well, I mean, as HPD, we're not, we're not, we don't pick and choose sites. Waikai has offered to pay, to have kids go there and learn to surf. It's a safer environment, they're taking them out in the ocean. The people that we use, we go through the Boys and Girls Club as well as, now that Weed and Seed has their own insurance, we can go and reach outside of that, but, you know, again, we don't take political stands where we're not going to use you because the community is saying that they don't want the issue. You know, our, our idea is to go out there and mentor the kids and work with the kids, whatever people are offering, offering for the kids to use.
So it's based off on who is the proposer and who's offering to?
Yeah, because as, as a police department, we don't have money to go and say, okay, we're going to go take them to the water park and, and pay for all the kids over there. So if somebody's saying, hey, we want, we want to offer this to the community, kids to teach them water safety and stuff like that, you know, we're not going to turn it down if there's an opportunity for the kids to learn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. See no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe out there. Moving on to board administration and planning, approval of regular board meeting minutes for October twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. Second, okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on to seconded, I guess the meeting, minute, excuse me, the minutes will be approved as read, I mean, as written? You know, moving on to four, dash A, we're moving on to presentations. We have the Nenua Mo, oh, it's supposed to be Nenui, Moa Limu Aquaculture Proposal, Neil Sims, Ocean Era. Please step up to the mic.
Hello, Akaka, thank you very much, Chair, thank you, board members. I gave a presentation, a couple of presentations here back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, but I did that by Zoom from Kona where we're based. It's a real pleasure to be here in person. This is both just to inform the community of what we're proposing and then to get feedback and additional contacts, please, so that we want to be able to be fulsome in our outreach to the community. If you could click through this, please, Jeff. Just, we're proposing to do an offshore fish and limu culture operation. We, as a company, there's six global issues that we see that, that are challenges for us, and we embrace this whole idea of thinking globally and acting locally. So when you look at all of these issues we've got, we as a company, if you could click through the next couple, please, Jeff, we see that the, the two things that we can do as marine biologists, we can figure out how to grow more limu. Limu is, it absorbs carbon dioxide, it absorbs excess nutrients, it increases ocean productivity, and we can figure out how to grow more fish, because there's a big push now to get people more reliant on what they call blue foods rather than terrestrial foods, less beef or pork. Click through now, please, Jeff. Sorry about this, we've got the video in the middle of it, but there we go. You can kind of figure it out as we go through. So a lot of the questions that we deal with as a company is where and how are we going to be able to grow the limu? At our facility down in Kona at the Natural Energy Lab, for the last five years, we've been doing trials with different species of limu, looking at ways to sporulate them, to get them to attach to strings, or testing the growth rate. If you could click through a couple more, please, Jeff. Just that one, thanks. Sorry, go back. So the beauty of limu is that if you can figure out how to grow it in the ocean, it needs no land area and no fresh water, and it doesn't need any artificial fertilizer, if you can find other, other sources of nutrients. Click through, please, Jeff. And so the, the challenges that we have now is, you know, to be able to really expand limu production and to be able to get products into the market, i- is just to figure out where to grow it and what species, and then what is going to be your target here? We think about food or feed or fertilizer, and then possibly also fuel or using it for carbon capture. But we, as a company, we want to be able to focus on what's most important to us as a community and what's of most value, and that's food or feed, so either food for humans or feed for either terrestrial animals, pigs and chickens, or for marine fish. We're already selling some of the limu that we're growing at research scale in Kona, we're selling it into local markets. This is the sea grapes here, which is at, at the real star of the show. People say it, 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 it's got the, the pop of Topico, of fish roe, some people call edible champagne. Click through, please, Jeff. The challenge here, one more click, the, the, the challenge here is just where do we grow it at scale? And, and we want to be able to move out into the ocean, because land-based production, it's expensive to pump the water, and it takes up land area. And we've got a problem with, with the PowerPoint, Jeff, if you could go a couple more clicks, sorry about this. There, technical difficulties. But so what we're also proposing to, as well as the limu, is to grow more fish, and there are three ways that we see it's important that we, in, in our research, that we, we can help figure out how to grow more fish. And one is to be able to move fish onto a more vegetarian diet, to get better diets for the fish that we're already growing, such as the kampachi or the moai. And the other is to grow more vegetarian fish, fish that actually eat limu. This is sort of moving the whole thing of growing fish down closer to the base of the food chain. And the other thing then is to figure out how to grow them in the least impactful way possible. And for that, we're looking at what we really specialize in is offshore aquaculture, figuring out ways to grow fish in deeper water, further offshore. So as, as a company, we've been working in offshore aquaculture for a number of years. We were the original founders of the Kona offshore operation down next to the airport. Thank you, that's great, you could do a couple more clicks to the next slide. The Kona operation down next to the airport, ah, sorry, we're on Nenuai, yeah. So figuring out how to grow a bivorous fish, this is the Nenuai that we've been working with for about ten years. Beautiful thing about this is they will eat limu. We haven't figured out exactly yet which limu they really thrive on, but they do really well just if you feed them the same sorts of pellets that you can feed to a tilapia, but it, it tastes like a snapper, is what we like to say. And we've done some initial test markets here at KTA and flew off the shelves. It was sold out overnight. Couple more clicks, please, Jeff. So this is the Kona Blue Water Farms operation that we had established back in two thousand and four. We ran it through till two thousand and nine, this is where we're producing the Kona kampachi. There were eight cages out there. The best year that we had was in two thousand and eight, we were able to produce five hundred tons a year of the, the kampachi, which sounds great, but we weren't actually making any money, and so the global financial crisis came along and our investors said, okay, can you find somebody else to carry this, please? We're really pleased to see it, and other operators came in, and that has continued production, they're still now, they're calling it Hawaiian kampachi. They did about eight hundred tons this last year, they've got plans to expand up to about two thousand five hundred tons. A couple more clicks through, please, Jeff. And the next one. So that was an operation that we had founded, and then once we'd sold that, we wanted to actually be pioneering fish culture in federal waters, and so we did what we called the Velela Projects, which was, these were small scale, small little net pens, this little bucky ball that you see here, but it was in federal waters, and so we're working with the federal agencies, NOAA and Army Corps of Engineers. The initial one was, a couple more clicks, please, Jeff, the initial one was unanchored, it was a drifter cage, and then that was recognized by Time Magazine as one of the best inventions of the year for two thousand and four. It actually wasn't our invention, we were just the first ones to go and try it, but hey, we took the credit. The beautiful thing about this is it was a spectacular fish aggregating device, or fishing buoy, mahi mahi, wahoo, tuna were gathered around this, and so it was really popular. The second iteration of this, second go of this, we came into six thousand feet of water, still in federal waters, put an anchor down, then fishermen knew where it was, fishermen and women, sorry, fisherpeople knew where it was, and so it was really, really popular, both for fishing community and also for people to go out spearfishing, snorkeling, tourist operators out there. It was a great attraction. Click through, please, Jeff, a couple more. We then also, down in Mexico, we set up an offshore, thank you, stop it, set up an offshore operation in the, the Bay of La Paz, which is in the Sea of Cortez in two thousand seventeen, and this was using a different style of pen. This is like the, the black rings, so it can come up to the surface. That's got the advantage when you're operating to be able to actually step right into the pen rather than having to use divers all the time. We ran this operation up until two thousand and nineteen, and other company is now continuing to run that. We're really proud that this was certified by Aquaculture Stewardship Council, ASC, which is an environmental and social certification program, and it's the most rigorous certification program out there. Jeff, if you could click through, please. So what are we proposing to do here in Eva? This is all of our background on our company, but I want to just be able to give you that to give us a sense that we have done this before. Nenuai is, we think, got a species that's got a lot of potential here. We've been able to produce them in the hatchery, if you do a couple of clicks, Jeff, see some of the finglings up on the left-hand side. This fish actually works better in the hatchery than any other marine fish that we've been able to grow, and it gets up to about a pound, pound and a half. that we've been able to grow. And it gets up to about a pound, pound and a half in ten to twelve months. That's not as fast a growth as a compachi, but it's still pretty good growth. And you can feed it, as I said, a tilapia pellets. We also want to be growing the moy. We're out near where Randy Cates used to have the moy operation back from two thousand and, from nineteen ninety nine onwards. We're just a little bit deeper. And that moy had really good traction. Restaurants loved it. Retailers, a lot of really good response from retail outlets. And so we'd like to be producing that as well. We'd also like to have on our permits mahi mahi and compachi. Mahi mahi because we love that fish, but it's really hard to grow. We're still at the research stage with that. But compachi because it's a proven fish, it's got a proven market, and we'd like to be able to be producing that locally. Next ones, please, Jeff, if you can do a couple of clicks through this. So this is the 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 location that we would propose to do this. It's about one point seven miles offshore. It's very close to where Randy Cates had his cages, the moy cages previously. It's a little bit deeper there. And Randy had the permit there for up to a thousand tons a year, about ten net pens. He'd gone through the environmental assessment process there twice in two thousand and two thousand and nine. But there hasn't been any operation out there since two thousand and thirteen. Click through, Jeff, a couple more. So we'd like to be able to be growing limu out there. With the calerpa, the sea grapes on the left-hand side. That's the one that we're already selling into the market and we've got really good traction on that. The halaminia, which is a limu lepe o hina, on the right-hand side. That also grows really well in tumble culture. We haven't yet figured out how to grow that on a line or in a basket. The big challenge with growing limu offshore is that beautiful blue waters of Hawaii, they're blue because it's like a desert out there. And so where are you going to get the nutrients from? And so this is why we'd like to be growing the limu next to the fish because then they'd be getting the nitrogen and the phosphorus from the the water down current from the fish pens. Thanks, Jeff. Click through a couple more. Up, sorry, go back. So back. So I wanted to show you back, we're going back to that one there. That shows the location of where we'd like to do this. It's very close to where the, straight out off the Ever Beach Park, just to the east of the Haseko facility. It's a little, as I said, a little bit deeper than where the moy farm was. Click through, Jeff. Thank you. That shows it with the bathymetry. We'd be proposing to do twelve pens at about seven thousand cubic meters, so about twice as big as what the original sea station cages were. Click, Jeff, thank you. And that shows the array of the pens. So these would be, we'd be able to bring them up to the surface when we wanted to work on them or harvest the fish. And then they'd be, most of the time, they would be submerged down about thirty or forty feet below the surface. I do want you to notice the anchor spread here. There's a broad spread of the anchors because we want to make sure that the cages stay there with really strong currents or hurricanes. And so that spread affects, if you come down to the next one, please, Jeff. Our thinking about where we'd like to be. We like deep water. If you go one more click, yeah. So the preferred site that we have is in about two hundred and thirty feet deep water, one point seven miles offshore. There's also alternative sites. We want to be able to have a discussion around what the alternatives would be. One of those sites would be deeper in about three hundred and thirty feet. That's two miles offshore. But because of that spread of the anchors, the deeper you go, the more spread you're going to have to have for your anchors. So that's where we think about two hundred and thirty feet is about the right depth. And then there's another alternative a bit further to the west, but that would be in really shallow water, a hundred and twenty-five feet. And that's not as, we like deep water. Deep water is our friend. To go to the next one, Jeff, and if you click down through this, so this is just sort of a summary. We have experience doing this. The site has been demonstrated to have no low environmental impact and low socio-cultural impact. Randy's cages were pretty popular with the local fishing community. We're focusing on on low trophic species where there's local markets. And we'd ideally like to be feeding some of the limu that we grow to the Nenuai as well. Been shown that in deep water, you don't have any significant impact on the seabed. And the benefits here are local food, economic diversification and jobs. We've been talking with Leeward Community College about setting up a partnership with them because training and manpower is going to be really critical for us. We'd ideally like to be hiring locally. And we'd also like to set up a a community advisory panel. So anybody want to volunteer? We're interested in having folk because we want to be able to have both a flow backwards and forwards of information with the community. Thank you. And if you go to the the last slide, please, Jeff. This is, in terms of the flow backwards and forwards with the community, this is the outreach efforts that we've had to date. My business cards are over here on the table. If you're interested in getting a copy of this presentation, please email me. And I'd like people to look through this list. And if there are contacts that aren't on this list, please let us know. Or if you have contacts, we've tried reaching out to the Sierra Club and Hawaiian Civic Club. They'd really like to have contacts to those as well, please. And one more click, please, Jeff, and that's it just provides the contact information for myself or Jenica, who is working with us. She's the director of the research for this. Thank you very much. I'm happy to take questions now, or if I've run on too long, Chair.
Sorry, that's my alarm. I think ten minutes. Give them two more because they had technical difficulties. Add two more minutes. Just get questions from the board. Go ahead, Alex.
So I have a few questions, so bear with me here. Thanks, Neil, and good to see you. My first question is just out of curiosity is like, so when you presented this a few years ago, you had that swing model. And I'm just curious on why that changed from that that setup to this current one.
Yeah, there was, that was an engineering company that had come to us with that design. And they're since out of business. And the more that we spoke to the other net pen engineers, they were much more, they the more they kept saying, Neil, the more anchors, the safer you are, rather than just having one huge big anchor.
Okay, great. Another question is, so the one thing that I I didn't see here, and I didn't see in the previous presentation either, is nothing on the current models and how I think the the primary concern is, right, so these animals are receiving feed, even though they're supplementing from the the local limu. But their feed and there's a lot of times often waste that flows through that. Where is that waste going to flow? And so I'm not saying it's going to flow on shore, but I'm just surprised that we don't see anything about the currents and where expect where you expect that waste to be distributed. Is that something that you can share with us or do you have insights into that?
Yes, so people are often concerned about overfeeding and feed going to the bottom of the seabed. But remember, the feed is going to cost somewhere between a dollar, a dollar a kilo to a dollar fifty, dollar eighty a kilo. So it's really expensive. And so any that's get falling down to the bottom of the cage is going to be costing the farm money. So we have underwater cameras that can allow us to be monitoring the feeding really closely. So the other issues there would be shishi and poop from there. So shishi is just nitrogen and phosphorus, and that's dissolved. All the work that's been done in Kona has shown that once you start to measure thirty meters or fifty meters away from the net pen, that you can't detect the the nitrogen and the phosphorus in the water there because it's so rapidly absorbed. In terms of the particulates, the the poop or the bio fouling from the the cage, that's really light and that will also drift. It will drift longshore, so more parallel to to the coastline. I think the best example is to look at the the monitoring that Randy Cates had had. And there was a shadow on Randy's cages were in shallower water. And so there was like the bio fouling, the limu or oysters that would drop off the cage would fall straight underneath. And so there was sort of a shadow underneath the cages. But as soon as you got twenty, thirty meters away from the cages, you couldn't, it was just like bare sand.
Okay, well, that, let's go to online. We have Karen. Do you have a question?
Yes, Karen Polk, Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, I do not have my video on tonight. Hi, Neil. Thank you. It's great to see your presentation. I know we were going to meet up and talk. I do have a question about the number of jobs. You mentioned you're working with Leeward Community College, which is amazing. So always good to have our future workforce coming into, coming in from here. But do you know, like, how many jobs you might expect from this operation?
It's probably at, if we build it out to the full twelve cages and with a hatchery on shore and then with the processing facilities there, it's probably going to be in the order of eighty or a hundred jobs.
Wow, that's amazing. Okay, great. Well, I look forward to meeting with you and learning more. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the community? If we got one, please state your name and your question, please.
Tara Rojas. And so I have a couple of questions. I did consult with, you know, a person knowledgeable in the culture. And so along the lines of like, you know, the ways and then just more specific information as well as the environmental impact statement, as well as the the area that this, this fish usually, you know, are their natural habitat. So I was just wondering, do you have plans in place, I guess, protocol and more extensive information where we can find about what you know about the natural habitats of this fish, of the specific type of limu? What happens if a wave, you know, a strong storm comes? And as you noticed, you just said, like, the other company went on a business, you're going to need manpower, you know, all these other little details. Do you have information? And they did specifically say that from what they know, the Nenuai, it's usually not of this area, which you will be introducing. And then also, how well do you know this area? This, this place, ocean-wise, because if you don't know that much, and then it's kind of almost like being maha oi just to come in in a random area. So that was my questions. And I guess we have follow-up.
Point of order, sure. If I could, yeah, I love your questions, but if you could address your questions to the chair.
Oh.
I, you know, I, and I, the reason why I bring it up now because it's a very orderly and very respectful tone.
Okay.
And I appreciate that. But sometimes it does get a little disorderly in here. And I don't want to ask that person to direct their questions to the chair.
So that question, if they can respond.
Thank you.
Yep. All all good questions, yes. And and we do have a draft environmental assessment, and I'm happy to share that with you and anybody else. Please take a a business card there, email me. We want to get people's feedback on this. I think that this is
Is there a community timeline for the process and input and feedback and deadlines? For the EIS, has it started? Is there community input as well, or did it already pass?
No, this is why I'm here for for that input. But I think we started this in early twenty twenty. I think we started that when I gave some of the initial presentations here to the board. So
Do you know the next deadline for the community input?
Uh, no, no.
Community input.
There there is no deadline, no. But yeah, we'd like to hear from folks so that we can start the conversations, please, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else had any questions? Okay, we got two more already. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I addressed you even asking it. In your operation in Kona and and this one, would you ever have the use of antibiotics if the fish get killed?
That's something that we would take under veterinary advisement. I mean, for the compachi, there was like, when we first started out, there were a couple of instances when we'd first put the small compachi out when they were really stressed because we're putting them out when they were too small. We're just trying to figure this out. And so we had to use like for for a week, we'd give them an antibiotic. There are only two antibiotics that are permitted to be used. And so we had to do that under veterinary supervision. And that was out of humane thoughts as well. You don't want your fish to suffer. And that was very short periods. Once we'd identified this is a bacteria that when the fish are stressed, they're susceptible to, we developed a vaccine for that. So now with the vaccine, then you don't have to use antibiotics for that. Now, having said that, the moy, Randy, I don't think ever used antibiotics on the moy. And the Nenuai are really robust. They're, they're, I should be careful. You've got to be careful what you say because the walls have ears. But but they're very robust offshore. They've got really thick scales and they're really, yeah, yeah.
Okay, maybe you already answered my question, but I was wondering if they're in more confined spaces, if they're more prone to get sick?
That's a general rule that when you have one species together, and that's why we'd like to have like the three species on the farm so that there's not so much potential there. And we're also really careful about just the density of animals. I mean, there's a big difference between open range cattle and then doing cattle in a really tight confined feedlot here. And and so for for fish, because the water's moving through all the time, it's really how many kilos of fish per square cubic meter of water. It works to be about thirty kilos per cubic meter of water is about, that's the limit. And that is the responsible way to be doing this.
Thank you. And one more question. Once in a while, we'll have sewage spills from the military. Would that flow into the fish or it's usually around Pearl Harbor?
From Pearl Harbor, it's generally, the current will move backwards and forwards, but it's generally down current. That might be an issue for the limu. And so we would, if there if there was, then we'd be doing bacterial monitoring, working with the Department of Health to make sure that our customers, our consumers are are safe, like any other food production system, that you have to be careful monitoring of of public health issues.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any question, please?
How's it, Jeffrey? I'm Representative David Alco, Chair. Members. My question is, I like local grown, local business, you know, farming, limo. One of the things I question is the safety. I like where you can go diving and maybe fishing out there with your boat and catch some extra fish, you know, maybe going down. What about like sharks? You know, how's the other areas that, did it bring in a lot of sharks in that area? Where now the surfers can go out and surf and no need worry, and the kids swimming? Just wanted to know if you did any homework on that and if you can feedback with the community later on.
Yeah, thank you, Representative. That's a a question that's always a concern for folks. And the experience that we have from the the Kona operation is that, yes, there will be sharks around the farm, that it's like an oasis. Any marine life gets attracted to things that that are, when you've got structure in the water like that. But down in Kona, I regularly surf at pine trees, which is just a mile and a half away from where the farm is, two miles away from about where the farm is. And it's, there's no greater prevalence of sharks there at pine trees that we've noticed. There's tiger sharks that come out from Honocahau and go swimming past every morning, but they're just on, they've been in feeding in Honocahau all night.
Right. So just the increase of sharks, if we do make a farm something out there for concern for our community? If you just monitor that, thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Yeah, we'll be monitoring both, both all all marine life that's out there, the large, what you saw, mega fauna, big animal turtles. The NOAA is going to want to be able to see us monitoring turtles and marine mammals there as well. And so we'll be using a hydrophone and we'll be using cameras to record what marine mammals are out there. And and if that's an issue for the community, I think we'd be happy to make that information about shark sightings, shark observations, we'd make that publicly available. What we did in Kona with the water quality and the the seabed monitoring that we did, that's mandated by the Department of Health and EPA. We put all of that up on our website so that it was publicly available. And the farm, I'm really pleased to see they're still doing that for the last nineteen years. And we'd look, if that's something the community's interested in, we'd do that for other mega fauna and sharks and marine mammals as well. Thank you.
Alex, you got something?
Last one. So I I think it'd be great if all that publicly accessible data could actually be beneficial from water quality and all that. My, I was just, my last question is on on restrictions on boat movements. So the pens are submerged that are primarily, it sounds like they're midway in the water column. And I'm just wondering, so surface wise, what kind of restrictions will there be on boating? Is there anywhere that boaters can't go and just what that looks like?
That's something that we'd always said in Kona that we wanted to negotiate with the community. Generally, just for safety reasons, you don't want to have boaters coming inside of where the the actual cage boys are. But then where the anchors are spread out, that's fine, that's fair game. I think we are happy to see there's a a pelu fisherman down in Kona that every morning he's out there on top of the cage. The cages there are submerged. There's a pelu on top of them and he cleans up. And that's one of this sort of mutual benefits that I think we'd really like to encourage.
I did want to say that a lot of the local fishermen, when you presented last time and I did some rounds, said that same thing, that they actually used around the old pen that was out there, that they used to like it, they used to fish around it. So I don't want it all to sound like negative, but more just questions.
All right, you got, you got a follow-up? Okay, go ahead.
So Aloha, Tara Rojas. I have my follow-up questions. Is the approval of this, for example, opening the doors to making this another Kona, you know, the Ocean Tech Park, you know, on Moko Keave, where it's filled with, you know, just these companies, either for profit or for, you know, studies. And so will this whole area then, you know, kind of just letting this one in, will it just open it up? And then two, the second thing is, because in And then two, the second thing is, because in Kona area, the same area as well was where the, uh, octopus farm was at, that they got shut down, you know, later. So again, just these issues to keep in mind what this will start. Because as you heard, you know, just for community safety, whether it's for swimmers, fishers, boaters, if this is one company, but if it expands to what's currently there in Kona, is this opening up the door to that type of Pandora's box? Mahalo.
Uh, that would be a, a, a question for the community and for DLNR to decide. This is, uh, you know, how much aquaculture would the community like to see? That's not for us, I, I think, I think aquaculture is generally a good thing, uh, the way to produce food from the sea.
Yep, thank you. Being a boater myself, you, you, you're at the Forty Fathom ledge, so that's the Ono ledge. So that, you know, that draws in a lot of the pelagic, the pelagic fish. So I expect a lot of trolling going past there.
Yeah, it will be well lit at night and there will be boys on the surface, so folk will be able to see where it is.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Neil.
Thank you all very much, business cards there, happy to have.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next presentation, we have the request point, Octo Coral, the Navy.
Sorry, tall guy. Uh, Evening Board, thank you, community, allowing me to speak. Uh, another marine biologist up here, this time going a little bit of a different route. Um, my name is Kevin Lino, I work with, uh, the Navy. I am a marine biologist, I've spent twenty years working in Hawaii, uh, doing coral reef surveys, uh, with different agencies from NOAA being the state, um, and now with the Navy. Uh, and what we're here to present, um, I'm not sure if the presentation made it or not, um, but there are some handouts that I think we brought as well, um, for the board to look at and possibly the members. Uh, so we're trying to bring some awareness, uh, and some clarification and some information, uh, to the community. And we definitely want to be here to, uh, be as, uh, open as we can and provide, uh, answers to any questions you have. And one of the projects that I'm currently working on involves the removal of an aquatic invasive species that we've recently discovered in Pearl Harbor. And upon further inspection and valuation, we found out that there was more than one species. So now we're dealing with a multi-species problem. Uh, the predominant species that we're dealing with, uh, is a type of soft coral called Unomia stolonifera. Uh, it took us several years, uh, soft corals are intrinsically difficult as a biologist to deal with. There's not a lot of science on them. We don't have very many of them in Hawaii as a native species. Uh, the species Unomia is very common in the aquarium trade. Uh, it's very easy to grow and it's, uh, very beautiful. It's also called a pulsing coral, uh, and so there's a fondness for them within the aquarium trade. And so upon doing, uh, more surveys, we were able to identify quite a large area where this species has been able to, um, proliferate for some time. And we've also found other species which indicate that this is most likely due to an aquarium release, as the other species are also popular aquarium species. Uh, these are areas where we think the introduction happened, uh, where we believe the introductions have happened. Uh, our areas on, uh, Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, where anyone that is on base, whether it's an employee, resident, um, or someone with a common access card or a guest, have access to these areas, these are not secured areas. One's a very popular fishing pier, uh, and just adjacent to that area as well. And so the other species that we have, another one is another species of soft coral. Uh, we recently discovered a corallomorph, which is a type of species that is somewhere in between a sea anemone and a, a soft coral. Uh, and also now we've just recently found a, uh, hard coral that is not native to Hawaii. Uh, that one is in very low numbers, but we continue to investigate and we're broadening our area to better understand the introductions and the spread. We have eradication programs in place, we are working with a multi-agency group, uh, where we have state, federal, local NGOs, Bishop Museum, a lot of different partners, universities, all working together. We meet twice, uh, twice a month, every two weeks to fill each other in on the updates, uh, and progress as we're looking to combat this threat. Uh, currently it is, uh, isolated to within Pearl Harbor. It has not made, none of the species have made it outside of Pearl Harbor to our data. Um, if it were to make it outside, it would be, uh, very detrimental. The Unomia species has, uh, been purposefully introduced in Venezuela, where someone was trying to raise it as an aquarium species and thought it'd be easier if they raised it versus in a tank. Uh, that now has millions of acres of growth of this species overtaking all of the reefs there. So it is a big threat to Hawaii, we're, the Navy is working very hard with all of our partners to combat this and to take this very seriously. Uh, and one of the first things that we've done is tried to do, uh, surveys to see exactly where the species is. And we have discovered that some of the species has made its way to Capelina Lagoon, which is why in part, uh, the command has requested, uh, that area to be closed down so that we can do the eradication, starting from the outside in towards the introduction points where the density is highest. So we want to knock it down in those outside areas as best we can, so it doesn't spread any further and to keep it isolated and concentrated. Uh, this species can reproduce very easily, uh, if you break it off or break it into pieces, those pieces can reattach and continue to grow. Uh, and so that's why fishing, any interactions with the bentos, you know, kayak blade, anything like that, or boat prop, um, just even, uh, fairly close to the bottom can also cause it to searate because it is a soft coral. It's fairly gelatinous. Uh, and so we are working diligently to start that eradication effort. Uh, we have multiple dive units that are working on it. Uh, the best way we can remove it is by manual removal for some of these smaller colonies that are in low density, densities like around Capelina Lagoon. The higher density areas, we're going to be smothering the coral. Uh, and that just means we're going to take away all of its oxygen. So using, uh, say Saran Wrap or Pallet Wrap to wrap a piling that it's growing on and taping that on there, so it doesn't have any oxygenation from the water, that'll smother and kill all of it. And that way it can't spread that way. Uh, we have divers out testing these methodology, uh, and they're monitoring them, ensuring that there is no entanglement hazards, ensuring that there's, uh, no loss of the plastic into the environment. Uh, and we're going to continue to delve, uh, into these techniques. Uh, we're trying to do our best to avoid having to go to, uh, any type of chemical solution or anything along that line, where we can use the most simplest tools that we have to continue to combat this species. Um, as well as work with our partners who have other, uh, ideas and concepts that can work, for when we get it down to a lower density and we have to go out and look for individual colonies and try to eradicate those on a smaller scale. Uh, so we have a lot of work ahead of us. Um, we are working diligently and we want to ensure the communities are aware. Uh, there's a lot of information being shared with the state, uh, with federal partners. Uh, we've gone through, uh, the, uh, federal process, uh, the NIPA process in order to get these actions, uh, approved to be carried through. Uh, we continue to, uh, engage as much as we can with scientific communities. A little bit of limitations with the Navy being able to engage with, uh, people in Venezuela. Uh, so we're trying to work through partners in order to be able to make that happen, uh, to do some kind of learning exchange, uh, as they're still learning a lot more, they've had this problem a bit longer than we have. But there's potential for us to continue learning there. Um, and so I'm here to answer any questions, uh, to ensure that the board and community is made aware that the Navy is doing, uh, as best as it can. Uh, this is a huge problem that is going to take a lot of time and effort and work and labor in order to do this. Uh, but we're working very hard to save Hawaii's community, uh, Hawaii's, uh, ocean resources as well as, um, ensure that the base itself is also adhering to this. So, uh, recommendations that we always want to make sure to give out, uh, is to follow the state laws where these species are not allowed, uh, in the state. Uh, so if you have them, this does not mean you should go get rid of them or dump them. Uh, it means you may not have been aware. Reach out to the websites and to other agencies, uh, to get more information, talk to aquarium shops, uh, talk to other aquarius. Uh, there's, uh, no questions asked with Waikiki Aquarium, you can turn your species over, uh, certain levels. And we will, uh, continue to try to get more and more information out there. Uh, we're trying to go through a lot of different avenues with, um, multiple different committees. And we've met, uh, with Sen, with the Senator Schatz's office, we've met with a lot of the other, uh, state representatives as well, keeping them informed of this and showing them site visits and the scale of the problem. Um, so that's a lot of information, a lot I'm putting out there and there's probably a lot of questions. I also have other colleagues here as well. Um, if I can't be the best to answer it, we will always try to get back to you and ensure that we can do so.
All right, thank you. Any question from the board? John and then Alex?
Just wondering who's paying for it and how long is this money going to be available to make sure that it's completely, uh, the job is done?
Uh, that is, has a lot of different, uh, I guess, colors of money that are coming through this. So the original, uh, effort was a mitigation for a Navy action, uh, where there is the shipyard that is being, uh, built within Pearl Harbor. And so for part of that mitigation action was to remove what we thought was, uh, up to nine acres of this species. Upon further investigation, we found out that was the tip of the iceberg. Um, and that was, you know, about ten or fifteen percent of the actual, um, invasion. Uh, so we have those funds that we are working through, um, to be able to work towards that. Uh, there's, uh, the base itself, um, has management actions and routes. Uh, we are going through every avenue possible, uh, seeking additional funds. We are going through every grant opportunity. We have education and outreach, say with Bishop Museum, one of our partners in our working group, who is looking for funds to help with the public outreach, to be informative and to try to get that message across and to reach even more broader audiences. Uh, and so, yeah, every state, federal and Navy action we have possible, we're, um, committed to seeking those funds as well as, uh, ensuring that we, this isn't just something that's going to stop, um, after this, you know, the nine acres are cleared. Uh, ideally, I'm committed to staying on as long as I can to get this out of Hawaii. Um, and so is the Navy and, uh, all of our partners as well. And so we have a management plan that we're developing as well to see how long, uh, we will do. And also in the worst case scenario that it does ever make it outside of Pearl Harbor, or it's introduced somewhere, or it's found somewhere else within Hawaii, that management plan and the rapid response plan will help inform the state to deal with it outside of Navy waters.
Yeah, Alex, go ahead.
Hey Kevin, thanks for the really thorough, uh, presentation there, lots of information. I'm curious, I'm sure you're aware of the kayak commute lane that goes through there. And I brought this up the last time this was spoken about as well, and just because our community uses that quite a bit to get over there. And so I'm sure you're aware, I deserve, I realize though, there's all this stuff that you're not aware right now. Is there a guesstimate on how long it might take to do this whole process? Or even, I guess, specifically thinking about the kayak commute, commute lane? And even the lagoons that are used by a local paddle team and things like that, like, do you have any idea on the timeline of this, this eradication process estimate?
It's really, it's going to be years to really get it completely, um, to a point where we think we have it managed, that we can actually make assertions to when we think we'll have it fully eradicated. Um, Capelina's lagoon and that, on the west side, um, of the channel is our, one of our main starting points. And so we would want, we have contractors that are going to be starting out to do the collections and removal there, but then we'll want to come back and continue to monitor to see how effective they are. And we want to give it a bit of time to be able to see what may come back or what may re-recruit, um, or what might be spreading from the other side of the channel as well. Um, so with monitoring, um, as you know, that takes time, uh, and I can't say with an absolute amount of time. I'd say in an idealistic world, uh, within three months to six months, we hope to have the Capelina area to the point where we think we have it, um, fairly well managed. Uh, but then we would still want to continue to monitor after that time period.
So, so just to follow up on that, I know that you said you're going to move from the outside in. And I wonder, considering that kayak commute lane, if you could consider clearing at the boat ramp on both, uh, you know, where it's a boat ramp on one side and it's another thing. Because it's basically breaking off the coral, right? So kayaks are all superficial. And if you were to eliminate it right at the takeoff points of both sides, you could free up that pathway. So I'd urge you guys to look at that because I think it's going to be, it's an option. It's a immediate option that a lot of people are going to miss, myself included, I use it sometimes.
Absolutely, and I think, um, they're looking to reroute that kayak lane, um, towards Fort Kamia Beach. Um, I know it's a little bit of an inconvenience and maybe adds a little bit more time. Um, but for now, that's at least providing an option while we're trying to combat this. Uh, because also if, you know, we, we have, we do have records where it has attached to something, um, you know, to a diver's clipboard. Uh, and so it is possible that it could attach to something. Uh, we know through all of the, uh, research and everything else that we have that this hasn't, we don't believe it to be transported via vessel, um, whether a Navy vessel or private vessel or anything along that line. Uh, we are looking to target areas, uh, in that, on the other side of the channel that are actually very active dive, um, units for the Navy as well, that run concurrent to where that is a haul out. So we know that, that's a priority for them, uh, as well, to make sure that they're still able to conduct their actions. So if we can coincide the two, we will. Um, we do have naval, Navy divers that are also assisting. Um, and that is pretty close to one of our, um, primary target spots. So I can't make any promises, but it is a consideration that we can work on.
Thank you. Any questions from the community? How many we got? Here we go, one, okay, go ahead.
Tara Rojas, uh, this is a good example of the, any disruption in the ecosystem. And so when things are out of balance and then tackling it after the fact. I'm glad that, you know, you're going to use all resources possible to be able to eradicate this issue. So my question is, being that, that area of Pearl Harbor is a super fun site, the biology of it, does contamination, whether it be fecal matter or chemical runoff or, you know, like sludge, you know, does that, is that part of also the process of it, uh, accelerating? One, is it, that's one of the questions. Because two, as we notice what's happening currently in Maui with the Kealia Reserve, which that, what was it, the halophilic bacteria? So the type of bacteria, does that again accelerate the process on a biological, um, level? And then three, is any more interruption? For example, because it's coming now towards Capelina from Pearl Harbor, is any of the, for example, what we heard today, you know, is, is any all of that going to accelerate, accelerate, you know, the, the condition as well? Mahalo.
Uh, very good questions, thank you. Uh, so from what we've seen from the research on the species and knowing this species, they're, um, surprisingly sensitive. Uh, we've also conducted some lab trials to see about, uh, removing them from the ocean and putting them in air and then returning them to the ocean. So in an instance, if you had a boat that was in the water and you wanted to move it somewhere else, how long would you want to leave that boat out of the water drying, uh, before that species would die off on it? Uh, we've also just tested it in fresh water. So if you're, you know, if we have divers out there working, how long should they soak their gear before we know that it's dead? So we're doing trials like that and it's surprisingly sensitive. Uh, what it's really good at is that this is not its home environment. Uh, and it has no competition, it has no predators, it can overgrow. Um, we haven't seen any, uh, impacts from, uh, some type of effluent or anything, um, changing in the water. Uh, it's actually, if there's shading, uh, shading actually prevents its growth. Uh, and so we, we do, we are taking that into consideration. A lot of the work that we do, we do water quality monitoring as well, and the base, um, has monitoring programs as well. So we do monitor that. We don't see any indication that that would be where it's coming from or that that would be, um, accelerating it. Uh, what it has is that this is kind of a de facto marine protected area because it is on Pearl Harbor and it doesn't have open access and people don't dive and see it, um, that it's had time. So it's had time and no competition, uh, and so that's why it's had the opportunity, um, to get to the level that it has been. Uh, and as far as the, um, other actions and things, yes, those are things that we are recommending with the Navy and, uh, other ships. We have, uh, different dive units, um, that inspect their hulls, um, and that provide us reports. They're inspecting pilings and everything else. Uh, so they're very aware of it, um, and they are, they understand the threat and they are, uh, putting their time and effort into helping us as well. Um, so we can reduce as much military action as possible. Um, and we're going to continue to do so and we have as much collaboration as we can right now with a lot of different dive units, um, and a lot of different agency support as well.
Right. Thank you for the updates and keep us informed if anything changes, you know, anything that goes on because that is right around the corner from us.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to residents, community concerns and community announcements. Uh, please step up to the mic, we're going to start with the community first. Um, step up to the mic, state your name, either a concern or an announcement, please.
Concern. So Tara Rojas, and my concern is that a couple of weeks ago, the Boys and Girls Club, they had to cancel the sessions and evacuate just all the students because of an issue with this smell, like the sewer smell, they heard it in the morning, they weren't sure. They heard it in the morning, they weren't sure if it was a gas or sewer. So upon, you know, just kind of researching, I didn't get to follow up with that sewer. I did call them, the wastewater branch. I have yet to, you know, get in touch with them because it's only like through email. But anyhow, when you look at the path of where that eighty-three thousand gallons sewer, raw sewage spill happened on Makule Road in February twenty twenty-three, if you look just right across the road, that's where the Boys and Girls Club is. So I'm not sure if it's an infrastructure issue. And again, I'm going to be following up with the wastewater branch. But just to bring it to your concern, because when February that happened, and I brought this up at, you know, every meeting about the infrastructure. And so it's like right across, and the people that were working in it at that time, they said, because of the old infrastructure, the ancient, ancient infrastructure, if any break happens, it's pretty much going to go down the line. And again, so this happened in February, just a couple of weeks ago, the Boys and Girls Club. And to see where the rest of the, the piping, the infrastructure goes. So again, sewage issues here in Eva Beach. And just to be aware, and mahalo. Mahalo.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry. Yes, Susan Gorman Chang. I am one of the ten elected community representative initiates, initiate, initiative, I'm sorry. And we were voted in September sixteenth. And we are to be the liaison between the community and the Navy during the defueling process. We have public meetings. Our next meeting is November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. It's going to be at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs on Nimitz. The Navy will be there, the EPA will be there, and our committee will be there. We have so far asked the Navy about a hundred and twenty-four questions in writing. We've gotten answers from twelve. It's kind of slow going, we're asking for all of our questions to be answered in writing. If you have any, please see me and I will bring them to that meeting. Or you can come to the meeting yourself. It's also going to be streamed live by Olelo and also recorded. One of the most important things that we have discovered is about fourteen military families through different areas of housing have had jet fuel in their water. I have a test here from U of H. One house has fifty-six parts per million. And the issue is, when they call the Navy, they say there's, you know, some issue with my water. But the Navy was not telling them that they could have their water tested. Also, we have found that when the Navy personnel come out to test the water, they're not real diligent on protocols. We had one person come out with a cup and, and wiped it on his shirt and then like tested the water with it. So there's some real issues there. The EPA is doing an investigation into that. The protocols as far as how the Navy tests the water. But again, the most concerning thing is that about fourteen families have jet fuel in their water, sheens on their water. So there's still something going on. We don't know if it's related to the, to the defueling or something on this military basis. So, yeah, that's my update. Mahalo.
Thank you. Real quick, was the fourteen homes in Capilina or just Red Hill or?
They are scattered all around. I believe one of them is in Capilina. They're all in the Navy waterline.
Got it. Any questions? Nobody? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Susan. Anybody else? Any residents, community concerns or community, community announcements? Give one more, anybody else? Rodney, we got two. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. My name is Thomasina Simmons. My husband and I are Eva Beach residents. We've lived here for over twenty years. I've lived here for over forty years because I lived in Old Eva and now I live in Eva by Gentry. I am invested in this community and I want to maintain the safety of my family and my neighbors' families as well as the property value of my home. I have expressed concerns regarding the parking on Hoano Street, which is in Eva by Gentry, H-O-A-N-O. And I have bought a crew of people that live in the neighborhood with me. And raise your hand if you're here for me. Raise your hand, you three. Okay, so they're all here because we all have the same complaint. We either live in this community, two of us just driving the community back and forth because they come to visit often. Expressing this concern since May twenty twenty-one, I've observed that the current parking structure has resulted in various issues, including verbal altercations, sometimes near misses with children and other cars. Since this time, there's been a car that's been hit and a rearview mirror that's been crushed because of the structure of the parking, which means they have two sides of parking on the street. So personally, I've had several locations where I am driving up the street and I have to stop and reverse all the way to the cross street in order for the other guy to pass because there's so many cars parked on this specifically one street. This is the one I care about because this is the way I get home. We have garbage trucks, UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, UPS, USPS trucks, and they honk their horns when they can't get past, they honk their horns when they can't pick up the trash cans because cars are blocking it, cars are parked around the cul-de-sac sometimes. And there's really two solutions to this. And I have to thank the Alcoas people that were here earlier because they're the ones that helped me get some answers and come and help, get some, some help from you guys. One of them is Bill Twenty. I don't know if you guys know about Bill Twenty, but Bill Twenty passed on October fourth. And this bill sets up a framework where it establishes restricted parking zones, which limits the parking to people who live in that residential area only. Started, I want to say in Kalihii, it's gotten to another place, I think in Aia. They need to either bring it to Eva Beach or go with my decision. It's really complicated to get parking stickers for every single car that lives in that area and, and somebody managing that. Because I'm not going to walk my streets every day and be tagging my neighbors because I have really good relationships with my neighbors. I'm not calling any particular neighbor out. I just want the other solution. The other solution that's simpler is to change the parking rules to designate only one side of Hoano Street to be available for parking. The other side of the street should not be available for parking. The adjustment would not only reduce the congestion and the likelihood of confrontations, but it's going to improve the aesthetics of my neighborhood. And in turn, it's going to make me keep my property value because I don't live in Old, Old Eva Beach anymore because I don't like that parking situation. I didn't pay a bunch of money to have the same situation start reoccurring where I'm living now. So if there's any help that you can give me on that, any direction? I've heard so many people tell me it's not owned by Eva by Gentry and I agree. And I, I understand that because I'm on that board and it does not belong to Eva by Gentry. It hasn't been turned over to the city and county. I don't know who's managing it and whose problem it is. But right now it's my problem and I'm asking you guys for help.
Do you guys have a HOA over there?
HOA is Eva by Gentry.
That's the master association.
So that's only that, that's all I pay.
Right across the street is TCLT and they have their own.
Nope, we don't have anything else. It's a single-family home.
It's under the city then. Got it. Any questions from the board?
So this is H-O-A-N-O, right?
I don't know what that is.
What's the spelling of the street?
Oh, yeah, I thought you were saying HOA and another acronym. Hoano, yes. H-O-A-N-O, correct, street.
Have, have you, this, have, have you brought this up to the fire department? Are fire trucks and, and those kind of vehicles able?
Pagan and I have chatted about it because he's also on the Eva by Gentry board with me. And he's the one that gave me a lot of information on three-one-one, coming to the Eva neighborhood meetings, going to our own meetings. Nobody seems to be able to know who I can talk to. I have talked to every representative, Martinez, Alcos, you name it, I've talked to them. I've emailed, I've done city and county, of course, Augie T, that's my favorite one. So whatever it is, nobody knows what to do and they keep directing me to other people. And at some point, there's going to be an accident on my street. You can ask any one of these people that drive on my street. They're here, my neighbors, one street over and one street over on the other. Like, everybody who drives on this street knows it's an accident waiting to happen.
Alex, you got something? Go back to you, John.
I'm co-chair of the transportation committee with Alex. So I, I will definitely go, go out there tomorrow and take a look.
Thank you.
And then, yeah.
Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, and I don't know, there's an online map that shows like the jurisdictions of the different streets. So I think step one would be that, to try to figure out, is it a city-run street? Is it state? That kind of thing is like step number one. And then we could find, John's really well connected in that, on that sense, so we can help there. And then I think, you know, another option would be, you know, if there's an issue, we could write a resolution and present it with the three of us and your team, whatever, write a quick resolution and get, or support. And that doesn't do anything other than continues to put pressure for someone to do something, which is what you're trying to do. So we could try to help in that sense.
But we don't know who we're putting pressure on at this point. But you're going to help me find that because you're going to research the street. Okay, and how do I make sure you have my contact information?
What, what you can do, there's a half sheet on the back. You fill out your concern and it'll go to the mayor's office, the representative, senator, whoever, all, all departments. And then that way you know, whatever your concern is, the community's concerned, it's getting to the right people. And as well, we have our transportation co-chair, chairs here that they, they hear your concern and they'll be following up with that as well. Any other questions from the board? I got one. One of your, one of your, I guess, answers to the solution was only one side, but I, I don't think that'll work because now the guys who can park, their rubbish cans will be blocked. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, now they're going to fight for that one parking. Hey, I live over here and move it across. We had an issue in Eva where one complaint, one guy complaining about parking, like, how you guys talking about? Cops always there and he became the hated guy on the, you know, the hated person there. And nobody could park on the street. So it's, it's an issue around everywhere. I mean, I lived Eva Beach my whole life, Old Eva Beach, New Eva Beach. I was on the board with Gentry. It is an issue. I mean, you're coming to the right place, you're voicing your concern and hopefully we can get to a resolution.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, we got one more, one more, or two more, and then we have one more online, okay? Oh, in the board. Go ahead.
Aloha.
Name and your concern or your announcement, please.
John Paul Jones. Yes, that is my name for anybody coming up with the, oh. My dad was in the Navy. All right, um, I'm going to read this because if not, I'm going to get in here and start freestyling this and then you're going to give me the look with the whole buzzer thing, right? So we're not going to do it. Oh, okay, okay. So here we go. Aloha council members, friends, neighbors, mahalo for giving me a bit of your time to discuss on things that's definitely going on within my community. I live in Old Eva Beach. Okay, again, my name is John Paul Jones. I'm a longtime Hawaii resident, little over thirty-five years. Twenty-seven of those years have been right here in Eva Beach. I'm a proud Eva Beach resident, okay? I'm a thirty-year retired master sergeant from the Hawaii, from the Hawaii National Guard. Proud father of two, husband and fiercely protective grandfather of two. I come before you to humbly ask for guidance and assistance with a matter that I'm sure other residents are dealing with without given locations, addresses, or names. There's a home within my immediate community that the homeowner absolutely refuses and not unable. They completely refuse to pick up their waste products from their animals. I don't want to call it what it is because we all know what it is, okay? Over the years, I've kindly, you know, repeatedly asked, because we were friendly. We've never been friends, but we were friendly, which is great. Reminded this individual, you know, hey, can you pick this up? The resident still refuses. And to this day, he has adult children that they won't pick it up either. Using a simple browser, you got to love Google. I came across the vector control ranch, which falls in the Department of Health. Reached out and made a report, spoke to an investigator, and which they came out to the home, which I expected. The inspector did check it out. He agreed, yes, this is a problem and it should be acted upon. I said, great, we're going to get some traction on this. Essentially, he came out, he did a report, the report goes back. I didn't hear anything about it. I continued to look over this fence. It's only a four-foot fence, by the way, this is Old Eva Beach. So it's a four-foot fence. So anything happens in that yard effectively happens in mine. They come out, they did the report. I asked for a copy of the report. And then, long story short, what happened was they sent the report, but the report and the notification didn't match. It looks like it was a form letter, they just inserted a few words and dates into it. No harm, no foul. I gave them the Hawaii revised statute, which is three-two-two dash one through eight. It clearly states what their purpose is and what they shall do. The notification I got back from the vector control board was, we don't intervene in neighbor-to-neighbor disputes. And I said, well, this is an organic matter, it's not neighbor to neighbor, this is the neighborhood, okay? Flies do not have an address, flies do not have a zip code, they go wherever they want. I'm getting there. Okay, so the only thing I'm asking for is, again, if someone from the Department of Health, vector control, anybody can tell me what laws will be enforced and what laws won't. If they could just put that in writing, so that way we can distribute it throughout the community and then we can kind of do what we want. Because essentially, that is what vector control is doing right now. They've already told me that if I want any type of resolution, I need to hire an attorney. That's out of control and it's in writing what they've said to me. So I've given this information to Augie representatives, Representative Alcoas, we got a copy, Senator Pavella, so on and so forth. I've just kind of spread this thing around. Again, I'm not trying to shame my neighbor, but it is kind of a shame for you to just treat your property like that. You can be filthy in your house, that's great, be filthy. But come on, common sense, well, yeah, common sense, that's all we're asking for.
Liam, you got something?
Uh, yeah, thanks for sharing that. Sorry for what you're going through. So if I'm understanding correctly, vector control visited the site, agreed that the waste is a nuisance or a hazard based on the report. However, they sent a notification to this person who is not maintaining the yard that was inconsistent with the, with the report. It sounds like the letter basically didn't provide any specific guidance or mandate for that person to clean it up. It was more just a notification, a complaint. I'm, I'm curious as a board if we, because I've been hearing issues across the neighborhood from people about whether it's garbage not being handled and attracting rats and mice and cockroaches or dog waste not being picked up, creating massive fly infestations that are all around the neighborhood. And this is a surprise to me that vector control is claiming they can't do anything about it. That seems antithetical to their existence. So I'm wondering as a board if we're able to call somebody in from the Department of Health, vector control, to explain these statutes and laws and how they apply. Because it sounds like they told you your only option is to hire a lawyer and personally deal with this person in court through a civil lawsuit. That's really, sounds nuts to me. So I'm curious if any other board member can provide feedback about inviting vector control to come speak as we invite from time to time certain departments. Because again, you are the fifth person in the last few months to share this type of concern with me, whether it's garbage or dog excrement or whatever that's a problem in the neighborhood.
Okay, for the last two, that yourself and the lady, the parking, don't forget that half sheet you guys fill out, the concerns, and turn it into him before you guys leave. All right, and even though you, 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 you talk to the council members, the senators and all that, this is like a second reminder, third reminder. So they'll get it again to make sure it's on the top of their, you know, the list of concerns for the community.
And just one thing if I can add this, I'm sorry, it's, it's, I actually had the name drop. This is the weirdest thing ever and I try to avoid dropping people's names.
What street?
I can tell you.
Hello?
Uh, yeah, so I actually had the name drop when I talked to vector control because it didn't sound like they were going to do anything about it. And then, of course, when I said, well, just so to true, understand this, Senator Favella's been CC'd, a couple of other people, you folks, they magically showed up the very next day.
Okay, make sure you put the street or address of that.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, we need that. Any other question from the board?
So to answer your question and board member Liam's question, we have our representatives here, city and county. And I'm not sure which jurisdiction, I would think city, county, or state, one of the two. State, yeah, state. So our representative, the governor's representative is, I think Perry. Perry Aerosmith is actually governor's rep now. Yeah, so Mr. Aerosmith is. Yeah. So let's coordinate with them because we can get Mr. Aerosmith to take that issue back to a liaison or representative there. So he is the representative for the governor's staff. So he did not only brings information from the governor's office here, but he takes the concerns back to the governor's office.
Perfect, perfect.
Is he here?
All right. Any other questions from the board?
You got a, a hand raised.
Oh, no, that's, that's.
Okay, Perry, did you want to weigh in? I see you online.
No, thank you. I am waiting to do a community announcement.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Aerosmith, obviously the governor.
Gotcha, sorry.
No worries.
Sorry, we'll move on.
Okay.
Thank you very much, but don't forget about that half sheet.
Yep.
Get it filled out. Last one, you got a concern or announcement, please state your name, your concern or announcement. Thank you.
My name is Brian Zindal. Deacon Board, my name is Brian Zindal, I'm a homeowner here in Eva Beach, specifically the TCLT community. The reason I come to you is, one, to raise a concern and two, for guidance. So quick back history, the TCLT neighborhood has had quite an issue in regards to its water delivery system. Going back about two years, they noticed two large holes in our private water delivery system that was dumping in excess of twenty million gallons of that was dumping in excess of twenty million gallons of water outside of our usage. In essence, it was going into the coral beds, uh, that are on property. Uh, they worked with the Board of Water Supply, they worked with various contractors to try and tamp down this excess waste of water. The board is now ten million dollars in debt to the Bank of Hawaii to try and repair what has happened to the water delivery system. Um, that worked briefly. Looking at the usage of the community, going back to last November, we were at six million, seven hundred fifty-one gallons of water. A year later, in twenty twenty-three in November, we are now at twelve million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand gallons of water. They say that the community typically uses about nine million gallons a month. There's six hundred and twelve homes that exist within this, uh, private HOA managed community. I believe at this point, it has gotten beyond the scope of understanding, ability and authority of our HOA-appointed board members. Um, and my fear here, one, obviously the wasting of, of clean freshwater that can be used for hygiene and for hydration of human beings. But also, our HOA's fees have increased by thirty percent over the past three years. This has certainly impacted me financially, but my bigger concern is that we have a large number of Kupuna and older residents that live in our community that are on fixed incomes and they can't necessarily flex. I mean, personally, I understand that I am in the prime of my, my money-earning years, right, in my forties. But for these individuals that are in their sixties and their seventies who are living either off of social security or off of pensions, the prospective next year's raise is gonna raise my HOAs by about eighty-five dollars a month. So give or take, let's, let's call it a thousand dollars a year. I might be able to figure that out. But for our older residents who cannot, this may mean that the homes that they've now owned for twenty-some years, they may be forced to sell because they can't flex. If it does get any, any more drastic and its fee increases, my wife and I may have to have hard conversations as to can we even afford our HOA fees? And all this comes down to water. It's all being wasted. Uh, it is not being utilized in the way that it should be in the hygiene and the, and the hydration of our residents. So my question to you is, is there an entity, is there a office that we elevate these problems to when they get out of the hands of an HOA association and their ability to handle those?
Any answer, any questions for the board?
The HOA again.
TLT, Tiburon, Las Briesas, Cordobella and Tiburon. That's why I live.
So it's Taraza, yeah, it's, it's an Ever Beach Gentry-built community, but it is now managed under the umbrella of TCLT, which is Taraza, Cordobella, Las Briesas and Tiburon. So it was four total phases and we are all within the confines of that one property. Uh, and it encompasses about six hundred and twelve individual residences. So, yeah, so, so part of the problem is that each of the homes, each of the homes is not individually metered. So there's one meter at the street, Board of Water Supply takes a gross reading at that one meter. And then the board, part of our HOA fees goes into paying the totality of that water bill. Um, so there's no way to say that home A, B or C is using this, this exact amount.
Trey, you got something? I mean, Liam?
Just so I'm understanding, um, the Board of Water Supply, uh, because it is a private well, uh, however it's being used, they see is not within their jurisdiction?
So from my understanding is that Board of Water Supply's responsibility ceases where our property line begins. So they deliver the water up to essentially the sidewalk. Once it passes beyond the sidewalk, that is now our private water delivery system and Board of Water Supply has no responsibility to.
And it's the HOA board that you said is responsible, has incurred ten million dollars in debt?
Initially, it was one seven-million-dollar loan, which the, the board or us as a community approved. Then they came back and said that wasn't enough. We needed another three.
To rectify the issue?
Yeah, so the, the loose terms where there's a number of different laterals and pipes subterranean that needed to be replaced. They brought a company in. They've been there now for about two years. There's still plates. There's holes in the ground that still have yet to be fixed. And what we're seeing is our water usage is still continuing to, uh, increase. We have not scalemated. We have not plateaued.
Yeah, contrary to the last, uh, testifier, this is an instance where my, my, my sense is this would be a private lawsuit, would be a class, a class action lawsuit. I mean, I'm, I'm not a legal expert. You're asking who this would go to if this is a private entity that is in charge of, um, responsible management of the water, um, resource and the residents are being penalized for that negligence. That sounds to me like, um, again, I'm not a lawyer, but like a civil court issue. But, uh, I don't understa-, I, I can't think of a government entity besides the Board of Water Supply that would be able to intervene.
Right, because I mean, it's, it's a common public resource. I mean, water is a resource for all of us. I mean, it's, it's owned by every human being.
Right.
Um, and then we have this HOA board of various members who, in my opinion, has not done what they've needed to do to prevent the absolute wasting of millions of gallons of fresh water.
Yep, uh, here in the United States, that sounds like a court action.
Right.
Sorry to say that.
Any other questions for the board? Alex and then Julie, sorry.
Thanks for showing up. I'm just curious, um, is this the same, it was in the news a couple of years ago about the big leaks and everything? Is this the same thing and that it was taken up with Ever Gentry? And they basically said that we're not responsible. Is this the same?
I can't say definitively, but I would imagine that yes, it is.
And so was there a legal proceeding with Ever Gentry about this yet?
Uh, so I, I believe that the board went back and forth with Gentry, the developer, uh, trying to say that they use sub, substandard, subpar building materials. But I guess state law, there's like a ten-year, uh, uh, restriction on being able to come back and say that materials were, um, so Gentry, you know, they got their, their lawyers, obviously, and they, they washed their hands and said, we, we have no responsibility there.
Hey Julie, go ahead.
The question I have is, Mitchell, do you know why that they meter the, these properties like this, which is one versus metering them individually? You happen to know why?
No, they talked about, um, metering, you know, like how they were saying each house, but it's gonna cost too much money. That's why our, our maintenance fees are built, the water and also our homeowners' insurance is all into one of our, with our maintenance fees.
Would I be able to ask Mr. Board of Water if he knows why somebody, a builder would? Because I mean, Gentry built, let's say, Summer Hill in the eighties and they're, they're metered individually. Why would they build something like that if Mr. Board of Water would be able to know that?
Uh, with condominium ownership, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Got an answer?
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelson Lee with Board of Water Supply. I can only answer limited amounts, but, um, the HOA, I believe, your board members came to the Board of Water Supply October board meeting and did present about his concerns for this issue. And our Board of Water Supply board members have agreed to meet with him in additional meetings on this. Um, sometimes we do see developers, for whatever reason, they do decide to plan out their water system as a private system and just have us provide water to a single meter. I'm not sure exactly why they did that, but that was their decision and that's how they created it. Thank you.
All right.
I am Tony Gaston with the Hunt Companies and I can answer your question. Um, I've never been involved with a development project. In the thirty years I've been doing it, doing multifamily developments where we do individual meters because it's a private water system inside of the HOA property. So that is not gonna be the Board of Water Supply's pipe, so that's why they stop it at one point. And that's why there's one big meter on the outside, then everything else in the inside becomes association responsibility.
Go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Tony.
Yes.
How often does the water bust in ten years?
That I don't know. Um, honestly, it's not supposed to.
So, okay, so if, if the waters are, like I say, on our side, that we live on, there's five planned communities like that. If they're starting to bust one after another after another, it starts to look like that's a, that's a, it's not just, um, the pipes, um.
That I.
It's not, it's unusual, right?
It's, it's unusual. It's unusual. I can't answer why.
So, yeah, we'll know, we'll just move on. I'm sorry, this issue was, uh, it's a, it's a long issue. I mean, from that, from the seven million was three million, went to seven, went to ten. Some of it went to the, a lot of it to the construction, a lot of it to pay down the bill from the Board of Water. And it's an ongoing issue, but like what you're saying, that the, the, the issue is that it's still, we went through leak detections. We went through multiple leak detection companies, went through now multiple contractors. Now these contractors said they were gonna be done in six months. Been two years. They asking for more money. I mean, we can go on and on about this, but we understand, I, I, I understand, a lot of us understand that the issue, it's still an issue. They still, to me, haven't found the leak, you know, and we're still paying top dollar. I mean, I got the five-bedroom house, I pay over six hundred dollars for maintenance fees. Like you're saying, it'll go up eighty-five more dollars, seven hundred dollars I'm gonna be paying next year. So it's a lot of money. And I understand you're, you're paying for that. So if we can come down, find out what the issue, real, the real issue is, I mean, it seems like we're wasting money. So I understand, I'm sorry, we're gonna have to move on. We had our concerns, but please write your concerns on that half sheet, turn it into him. And then at least it's not falling on deaf ears and we can get the mayor, governor, whoever, as well, hearing these concerns as well. Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna move on. Rodney, go ahead.
Aloha. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Uh, thank you, community members. My name is Rodney Boucher. I'm a Red Cross volunteer. My first part is in reference to being aware with the Maui wildfires disaster, with the Mililani Maoka wildfires. We are still in a drought condition. Uh, that is not gonna change anytime soon. So please take a look at your own home, assess your issues, uh, take whatever measures you can to help yourself and help your family and help your community. Part of that is having a go-bag ready to go if you have to get out the door because you have to be evacuated. Uh, please consider this as something to plan now. We are still in hurricane season, but wildfires are the topic that is most prevalent and has killed more people this year than anything else. So please take care of that mind. Second face, uh, tomorrow is Veterans Day actual, with Saturday being celebration. So I wanted to do a shout-out to fellow veterans, uh, Navy veterans especially. Whoop. Okay, silence, all right? But, uh, here in Eva, you might not know it, but we have a national historical registered battlefield. It's called the Eva Battlefield. It's, uh, it is the Eva playing battlefield is the first place that was attacked as they came in to Strafe Pearl Harbor. And we have a December third ceremony for that. I can provide more information, but if you go to the amvetshawaii.org, you can find out more information online. Uh, you're more than welcome to come out. We are planning to have the ceremony on the actual Eva battlefield, historical battlefield, and we'll provide more information for that. And I do have a brochure, a nice colored brochure, yeah, that I can give to the board if you would like to look at it. Other than that, uh, I'll wait for, uh, our representative Augie to talk about what happened today at the Amvets West Oahu Veteran Center, uh, which was spectacular. The last three days, uh, have been great and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to online. Lyman, Dee?
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Uh, my name is Dee Weideman. I am, uh, with Aloha Racing. And I am here just to let you all know about four events we have planned for twenty twenty-four. Um, our events are running events, five Ks, ten Ks, half marathons. Um, we have Akahai on January twentieth. We have Ho'Omau on May fourth of next year. We have Laulea on July thirteenth and Makoa just under a year from now, November second. All four of these events are, uh, half marathons. They start very early in the morning. Um, everything begins and ends from Waikai, um, January and July. Uh, go up and around, up Kamakana, um, Geiger Roosevelt, down Coral Sea, and they enjoy Nimitz running along there. Um, May and November use Kapale and Papipi Road. They run down by Oniula. So, um, just wanna let everybody know about these events. Um, if anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer by all means, but otherwise I will leave my website address in the comments, um, to be shared. However y'all share, I'm, I'm welcome to, I welcome anyone to, um, email us through the website if they have questions or concerns.
Thank you. Can you add that, those dates if possible to the, or your website?
I can put that in the comments. Is that it?
Yeah.
You got it.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Okay, we're moving on to, I guess, board members, John and then John Rogers. Go John Clark first and then John Rogers. Oh, you have an announcement? Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Aloha, board, fellow community members. Uh, this is an announcement. Um, I am Eric. Yeah. Eric Antalan. I'm a resident of Ever Beach, uh, Ho'O'Pili area. Uh, but I'm also a community outreach liaison for Halau Episcopal. Uh, we are a nonprofit, faith-based nonprofit, um, in Kapale across the elementary school. Um, but we serve Ever Beach, Kapale, Cunia and Makakilo. Uh, more importantly, um, I come here to represent Halava'a, just to say that we are here to support the community and members and everyone with Ever Beach. And a small kind gift I bring with, uh, red, red sea salt, just to share. Um, it's a red sea salt used to cleanse, purify, blessing tool for the canoes, homes and temples in a healing ritual. So, yeah, thank you for allowing me to share with you and I'll be here, uh, in January as well to support.
I put them on the pokey. Thank you. Eric, what was your last name? Thank you very much. Okay, John Clark, John Rogers.
Aloha, Kaka. Uh, James Campbell High School, our largest public high school in the state, uh, will graduate almost seven hundred students in May. Six hundred and eighty-seven students is the size of the graduating class. Save the date, December sixteenth, that is a Saturday. Uh, Project Grad will be holding a festival, uh, at James Campbell High School in conjunction with the Christmas Day, uh, the Christmas parade, not the Christmas Day parade, the Christmas raid. Uh, if you'd like additional information, check out Ever For Ever Facebook group. That's EWA, the number four, EWA. Uh, again, save the date, Saturday, December sixteenth. Uh, they're gonna have, uh, lots of stocking stuffers, lots of crafts, uh, good eats, all no food. Hope to see you there, Mitch, and a couple of your other board members and everyone in the community.
John Rogers, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, everybody. I'm a, I'm a, other than this, this thing I'm doing here at the Ever Neighborhood Board, I'm a volunteer with Hawaii Bicycling League. And I just wanna, uh, let everyone know about, uh, a, a great, uh, workshop that we're gonna be holding November fourteenth, uh, nine fifteen to eleven fifteen at Old Stadium Park. Um, HBL Hawaii Bicycling League is partnering with Beiki Bicycle and we're gonna, um, do a two-hour workshop, uh, teaching about cycling and urban environment. But the great thing is, is that you're all gonna get, everyone who signs up for this workshop at hbl.org. Uh, you're all gonna get a Beiki bike, you're gonna get a, and a one-month pass to use the Beiki bike and also a helmet if you choose to, uh, get a new helmet. So this is a great opportunity to learn how to use the Beiki system. Uh, I, I, I'm a, um, I register, I work with it. I mean, I, I use it every time I go into town or most times I go into town. So it's a, it's a great, uh, opportunity. Again, that's November fourteenth, nine fifteen to eleven fifteen at Old Stadium Park. Um, and if you're interested with Hawaii Bicycling League, learning how to fix a flat, we're running a workshop in Mo'iliili on eleven eighteen, November eighteenth at ten to twelve P M. And we're also doing a fix-the-flat, uh, uh, workshop at, in Kaimo Ke, uh, eleven twenty-five, November twenty-fifth, uh, one thirty to three P M. Um, so that's my Hawaii Bicycling League hat. Now I also volunteer with Malama Pualoa, um, and they were, were doing a restoration project, um, out in the western Laka Pearl Harbor at Kapapapui, uh, Park. We're removing the mangrove, planting natives and, um, uh, just cleaning up the area and, uh, bringing fish ponds back to life. I mean, that's our, that's our real, our big goal in the future. And we have a workday coming up this, um, Saturday, November eleventh at eight A M. to eleven A M. And, uh, the good thing about this work, workday is, uh, you get pizza when you're done, so. So thank you very much.
Can you ride the Beiki bike on the sidewalk? Can you ride the Beiki bike on the sidewalk?
Not in, uh, town. No, we, our workshops work, we.
No, I'm sorry, we, we get a Beiki bike for a month, you said earlier, so can we ride that on the sidewalk? Because we talked about electric bikes earlier.
So in an urban. So, in an urban environment, the city law does not allow you to ride a bicycle on the sidewalk. So, in the city, you should ride it in, on the street.
Okay.
Or in bike lanes or in shared use paths or whatever.
Thank you, other John.
Okay, any other Board Member? Singnan, I got one quick one from one of our residents out in EVA, Renton Road, this came from, in two minutes, if I can read this real quick. This is from Mr. Stanley Tomashiro, the Principal of EVA Elementary, this came from a resident from Tenny Village. At 1:50 on Friday, November 3rd, I got an emergency that was, and I was heading home. Suddenly, the car stopped moving. I feared that there was an emergency happening in front of the school, but I did not see any police, ambulance, or fire truck. I got out of my car, walked up to the, the first stop car, and appeared that many of the cars that stopped are waiting to enter the roundabout in front of, in front of the EVA Beach Elementary School. However, it was only 1:50 and the student has not been dismissed yet. Since there was an emergency at my house, I asked drivers, uh, in the car if they could move on a side or drive around, uh, the block so I could proceed, uh, down Renton Road. Well, I was pretty much, uh, looked at them and they ignored me. At the meantime, the car was trying to get through, jumped over the curb and passed. I was very upset and I had no response and was, uh, completely, uh, ignored. Becoming more and more anxious thinking about the emergency at my house. I started to beat my horn, well, no one moved or attempted to move. A woman came out from the parking, from their parked car, perhaps some, uh, mother or grandmother called me a Karen. I explained to her I needed to get through and didn't want, uh, think that it was legal for cars to b, block people from going down Renton Road. Then I looked back towards Fort Weaver and the traffic stopped all the way up in 711, which is almost the entrance to Fort Weaver Road, perhaps even beyond. Now, now I was, uh, the fifth car after the first car parked on Renton Road. I admit, I was becoming more enraged and did not behave as calmly as I normally do, I felt trapped. Uh, I called 911 to see if the police officers, uh, could be sent to direct traffic. So, here I was, waiting, waiting, waiting. Finally, at 2:00 PM, the school bell rings, it was another seven minutes before, before I was able, uh, to continue my drive down Renton Road because of course, not all children were ready to pick up. Considering all of this, I decided to write this letter. I stated earlier, I do not feel Renton Road should be blocked and come to a standstill for 10 to 15 minutes. I'm hoping that you and your team, oh, she's, I'm gonna fish up. You and your team can come up with an idea that folks, uh, who live in Tenny Village can get home, uh, or whatever it is that they're doing. Please feel free to contact so-and-so regarding this matter. So, it's another person, I guess, the, uh, parents are waiting on blocking Renton Road, which is, you know, trying to get through to pick up their kids. So, there's another issue from the community. So, again, now, you, I, I'm gonna have to fill out a, a, a half sheet for this person. So, probably the Mayor's Rep or City Official or whatever can kind of respond to this and kind of figure it out.
By the way, that's, uh, EVA Elementary, not EVA Beach, you said EVA Beach.
Uh, EVA, sorry. EVA Elementary, Renton Road, EVA. Sorry, my bad. Thank you. Seeing no other, uh, residents' community concerns, we're gonna move on. Other mon, uh, other monthly reports? Hunt, VA Clinic?
Good evening, everyone. Members of the community, members of the Board, I'm Tony Gassen from the Hunt Companies. I'd like to give you guys a quick update on how things are going on at the VA Clinic. But before I continue, I would like to apologize to everybody in the meeting that my phone was making noise. Uh, I did turn it on silent, and I will say it was, it was an alarm to tell me to take my meds, so. I know, terrible, but I'm so sorry about that. Okay, let me continue on. Okay, well, first off, things are going great at the VA Clinic right now. Uh, this overview here, you can see how, check this out, the parking lot is all striped now. Um, okay, if you, if you can kind of tell, you can see the handicap stalls. There's a whole bunch of them for obvious reasons, this is a VA Clinic. In this next image here, take a look at this. This is a stall where we see one of the EV chargers. There's gonna be 19 of them out at the VA Clinic, so. Also, say again? Yeah, they are. That's why, so you, you'll be able to park your EV out there now. There's also gonna be handicapped EV stalls because of, again, it is a Veterans Administration Clinic. On the exterior, check this out, a lot of the landscaping's going in, and you can see it is reaching even closer to the finishing stages. On the inside, take a look, they are now putting up the pattern on the walls. It's starting to look really good inside. Check this out, you can see one of the restroom sign being put up, and this actually looks like you can start mobilizing in there, right? And guess what? Um, the VA team is very aggressive, and they wanna hurry up and start getting in here too. Take a look at this one. They started bringing in their radiology equipment already. And this is the stuff that does x-rays, so they are also very eager to get this place open. So, things are still going well out there, still on target for, for the exterior completion and everything in January, still targeting to open in May. That's my quick update for everybody, are there any questions?
Alright, thank you. Okay, John Clark, go ahead.
Uh, quick comment, if you could go back to that picture, uh, uh, Tony, of the, um, of the EV charger. Just a quick concern there, more than a question.
Sure, let me go back to that for you.
I guess I can frame it as a question. S, I, I have a concern that maybe people backing into that or going forward into it are gonna run right into that charger and knock it over.
Okay, so this is just a shot, just showing it, I don't know if there's gonna be more that's actually installed.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this, this is show.
Protection or something like that?
There might be, I can find out for you.
Okay, sure. Cause I'm a veteran, and then sometime I don't see so good, so. Okay, thank you, Tony.
Any questions from the Board?
You're welcome.
Any question?
Navy, go Navy.
Any question for the community? Tara, you got something? Hey, go ahead.
So, regarding Aloha Tara Rojas, regarding this new VA Clinic and new family homes, I just wanted to know, uh, let's see. So, I'm reading a statement that veterans, families, children, and elderly will be subjected to questionable toxic soil exposure issues they will likely not be aware of at all. Linked to the Parcel One studies and reports done by various contractors will be responsible when health issues, health issues, cancer begin showing up later. So, Parcel One was formerly N S Barbers Point Housing for Navy Families, and was subjected to a variety of toxic chemicals which may have been mitigated by soil remover, removal with a big toxic pit capped with asphalt. This concept was based upon mainland techniques and did not consider at all the EVA Plain subsurface karst water system, which will migrate the toxic waste through the community and into the reef ecosystem, food chain, beaches, et cetera. There was no consideration of the actual subsurface karst water system that migrates groundwater via subsurface streams from the Y and I foothills to the EVA shoreline. Toxic soils removed were blown throughout the community by massive heavy trucking and massive stockpiling without protective coverage, blowing toxic dirt and dust into nearby homeschools and businesses. And so, as we noticed with what, what happened on Maui, the toxic ash, the toxic soil, this issue, what will be done to mitigate this and has, uh, the soil, the soil been tested? And if you can follow up with that?
Uh, I will repeat again that we did go through an approved plan to address pesticide-impacted soils. The soils were eradicated and placed and covered, and we followed normal procedures. I, I don't know what else to say.
Alright, any other questions for the community? Singnan, thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Gentry. Gentry, okay. Haseko. Okay, if anybody's on, they can come on. DR Horton?
Chair?
Yes. Ooh.
If I could just bring up a concern, I know that Haseko is not here, but a community member brought up concern with me dealing with Haseko, and I just wanna be able to.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, bring this up. Uh, this ne, neighbor was sharing that they're trying to build the Royal Kuniya II subdivision, and part of that land is actually a warning sign for dioxin, supposed to be right by that land. So, this neighbor is concerned about the dirt blowing over from that area, cause it's basically all dirt. Um, you know, I'm just hoping that Haseko would be here to answer those concerns and get some sort of answer to deal with this concern of whether or not they are building a subdivision next to a hazardous area. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from DR Horton, Ho'Opeleli?
Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to ask something about DR Horton. So.
Okay, go ahead.
Right now, um, they're not here, so they're, right now, DR Horton is building a huge stormwater retention, uh, thing, uh, hole in the ground, uh, near Sing Park, West Lock Fairways. And it's just gotten, it's grown and grown and grown and grown. It used to be a little pit that was used for just the West Locks, uh, now it's, uh, it's, cause I guess the water's gonna come from Ho'Opeleli, the stormwater. But it's grown so big and they got, uh, actually structures that are down in the bottom. I really wish we could get, um, uh, them to come to our, one of our meetings and tell us what's going on.
What location?
So, this is, um, behind a Sing Park.
That'd be probably Gentry.
No, 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 it's owned, I, I checked a GIS map, it, it's owned by, uh, it was owned by Campbell, and then, uh, when it was a storm drain system for West Lock, and then it changed to hands to Ho'Opeleli or DR Horton, um, when they, and now they're building a big stormwater retention. At least I think they are, and I.
You thought that was the one because we're on the corner of, um.
This is Renton Road.
Yeah, yeah, so, cause then, you know, the new park they built right next to Holomua? Cause that was the stormwater, so they filled that in, building a park, and they had to move that towards where you're seeing. So, I'm, I'm figuring, well, we can follow up if it's.
Yeah, you're, you're Horton, or both of them are doing it, but we should know what's going on there.
Yeah, got it.
Cause it's a big, uh, big pit.
Alright, I'll find out. Okay, we're moving on to government officials. Uh, US Marine Corps Base Hawaii?
Good evening, uh, to the veterans in the room, uh, behalf of Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Happy Veterans Day. Thank you for your service, uh, we appreciate you. Uh, got a couple of updates for you, so that our sampling and analysis plan is at the finish line. Uh, we have DOH concurrence, and we have sent a letter to the new director, uh, Dr. Kenneth Fink, uh, to request their participation. Colonel Bevan's out of town on travel, uh, this week, uh, but we, when he returns, we plan on publicly releasing the details of the SAP, uh, probably sometime around the end of the month. Uh, for sound, uh, our sound modeling, uh, is done in unison with the Range Compatibility, Compatibility Use Zone Study, so that's complete. And we've got some engineers looking at some improved sound systems with the ultimate goal, uh, that no sound from the intercoms, which we received some community feedback on, uh, leaves the installation. And then for those members of the community that shoot with the Pulaa Rifle and Pistol Club, uh, we will be moving you from Alpha to Bravo range to reduce the amount of noise that escapes the range from the 762, uh, rounds that are fired. Uh, concurrently, we have the Range Environmental Vulnerability Assessment going on. Uh, and one of the things with this separate study, uh, is a pathway analysis. So, they'll study potential pathways, uh, of things leaving the range. And what that affords us at the, at the base is an extra opportunity to do sampling and analysis that's not covered in the SAP with DOH. Uh, lastly, uh, for your calendars, uh, I got a community event coming up on February 24th, 2024. Uh, it's Bay Fest, and Common Kings will be the headline event, and, uh, the base will be open to all. So, pending any questions, that's all I've got from MCBH.
Any questions for the Board? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I have a, a, a two-part question. Um, first is, uh, whether you were aware that Congressman Ed Case, uh, sent a letter on behalf of the, um, members of the EVA Beach community to, uh, um, Marine, uh, to, uh, command in DC? And whether or not, he asked for an October 31st reply to his list of questions, whether that, um, those, that reply was sent to him?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, we'll, we'll re, requesting a copy to see.
I, I don't have the authority to release that, that's Congressman to the commander of the base.
Okay, so that, that was question one, thanks. And then the second is, uh, um, Board Member, uh, Gauss and I have, um, had concerns of community oversight and transparency, uh, cause essentially, uh, this sampling and testing will be led and done by, um, the Marine Corps itself. Um, from what I heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, DOH still has not committed to being on-site. Um, we had, uh, Board Member Gauss and I had proposed, uh, a lead, um, testing working group that would include, uh, members of the, of the Board, um, members of D, uh, DOH staff, um, representatives from the Surf Rider Foundation who did the initial study a year ago, as well as the Marines, just to ensure there is transparency and oversight, and the Marines are not essentially investigating themselves. Um, can you share why, uh, the Marines have not agreed to the formation of this working group? Which I would remind you is very similar to the groups that have been formed for the defueling of Red Hill, these sort of multi-stakeholder, um, oversight and transparency groups. Is there a reason that you guys have not agreed to having this, this group?
So, our, our first priority upfront was getting the sampling and analysis plan done. Uh, so we've got two to three professionals working on that plan in our Environmental Compliance and Protection Division. That was our first priority. So, now that we're across or near the finish line with that, I think we're, we're open to the discussion on maybe forming some type of working group. Uh, that could change, but I think, I think for now, we're open to it. And I, I'd love to hear from you again, uh, we'll see what we can do.
Great, we really appreciate that. And just to clarify, uh, you, you said a letter went to Director of, uh, DOH Director Fink, requesting them to be on-site?
Yes.
But you have not heard back yet?
No, we, uh, so we just learned, we sent to the old Director, uh, Char, uh, and we just learned that she had been replaced by Kenneth Fink. So, we resent a letter appropriately at, addressing him, uh, as the Director of DOH, uh, we have not heard back.
Yeah, and then last question is the date, I know you didn't mention it, but, uh, is there a projected date for the, uh, testing now that, uh, you said you'll be moving forward now that there's been sign-off from DOH on the sampling?
I don't have a date with me tonight, no.
Okay, no, no general sense at all? We're talking?
Uh, general sense, I would say one to three months.
It's close.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the Board? Any questions for the community? Go ahead, Tara.
Aloha Tara Rojas, as you know, it's going on over a year, and do you know how many meetings that we've been to with the Navy? Every single meeting for them to finally agree to create a Community Resource Initiative type Citizen Oversight Committee? I think you've been here, you know, in every meeting long enough to know that if you can please put this as your priority to have this community, uh, Resource Initiative Oversight Committee made as soon as possible ASAP so that the lead, uh, issue and the contamination of the waters can be addressed. And again, if this has happened so long with the Navy, happening now as well as the Marines, you know, this just really needs to be, uh, addressed now. Mahalo.
Okay. Seeing no other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on, US Navy?
Aloha Chair, aloha Neighborhood Board and Community. I'm Danny Hayes with, uh, Navy Region Hawaii, and, um, I'll read off of first, uh, a few things first. Um, wanted to, um, wish, uh, veterans, Happy Veterans Day, uh, it'll be, uh, celebrated tomorrow. Uh, wanna really wish the, uh, Marine Corps, uh, Happy Birthday, that'll be, uh, tomorrow. And, um, we'll jump right into it. So, the Joint Task Force Red Hill, they began, uh, defueling last month, October 16th. And, um, at that point, they had, um, estimated the 104 million gallons of fuel, um, gravity defuel they were gonna start at that point. Um, as of today, this afternoon, uh, there was approximately, they've removed, uh, 84 million. And, uh, you can see the, uh, status on the, uh, JTF Red Hill website. Uh, so they'll do updates, uh, regularly. Alright, and moving on, I know there was a concern, a community member had brought up a concern about the, uh, water. Uh, the drinking water, uh, Long-Term Monitoring Information Booth, um, they're still having that. So, if there are residents who are on the Navy, uh, water system, they can go there and they can ask questions of the, uh, subject matter experts who are gonna be there. Uh, they will show them how to read the, um, water monitoring report. Um, they will test for the residents, so all you have to do is sign up with them to have your water tested. Um, there's also information about the, um, uh, Defense Health Agency that has, uh, people available here still to, um, test people who are on the water line, who might feel they are sick or something. So, all of those resources are here and now. Um, so if there are any residents who, who feel, who are on the Navy drinking water system and feel like there might be a problem, uh, they can go to these booths. And, uh, the next one will be Thursday, November 16th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That'll be in the Halsey Terrace, uh, NEX Mini Mark that's, uh, over there. There's one, uh, November 30th, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM, or 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the, uh, the main, uh, Navy Exchange, uh, Pearl Harbor. So, those are places where, uh, residents can go if they, if they do have concerns. Um, also, um, I will turn this over to Mr. Flint. Uncle Vic?
Thank you, Brother Danny. Victor Flint, Naval Facilities. Uh, October 25th, students from the, uh, Oginia Elementary School in Mount. in Nagaoka, Japan, visited Pearl Harbor. Nagaoka is our sister city, so this was kind of neat. Kids had a great time. October 28th, this is for you, Brother John. Maikai, we had that Pearl Harbor Bike Path cleanup, everything went well. And, uh, we're going to be having more of those in the futures. Last, uh, on November 18th, the Navy will co-host annual Makahiki. Uh, we're partnering with the Oahu Council of Hawaiian Civic Clubs and Native Hawaiian Societies. Everyone is going to pa'au at the A-Frame, uh, adjacent to the Rainbow Marina. It's all Manoahi and it's open to the public. That's all I have. Are there any questions for myself or Brother Danny?
Any question for the board? Corey, go ahead.
So with the previous speaker we had saying that they had, was it 12 people that have verified? 14, that they've had, said they still have contaminated water. One is, has the Navy confirmed that number and then what are they doing about that?
So if there's anyone who has had problems or they feel they've had problems with their water system, uh, they can go and, uh, have it tested. They can request to have it tested. Um, that specific group, um, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know about that group. Um, but, uh, what we do want to share and what we have been sharing since, um, uh, the beginning of the crisis is that there are resources available for people to go to if they want to have their water tested, if they are feeling unwell. Um, and these are all at no cost to themselves. So Defense Health Agency's got clinic here. Um, and, uh, there's also folks who can, uh, test their, their water. Um, now I sent the full report onto, uh, the Chair and that's got the, uh, the website. But, um, I'll read it for you. It's, um, uh, so it's Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hikum. So it's J B P H H dash safewater.org. Uh, that's the website they can go to, to see those, those resources.
Any other questions for the board? John, go ahead.
Hi Danny, uh, I, so I just want to, um, make sure that in January, that we can get, um, just an overview of what's going to go on with the, uh, bypass, the, the expansion of the Westlock Annex and, and the bypass road, a little presentation so that we can understand what, what the future is going to hold and when that's going to happen, how soon, how long it's going to take, all those, those common things.
So, so January, you would like something like?
Chair, can we do that? Jan? Yeah.
All right. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Alex, and then we're going to go to questions.
I have no idea if this is related, it's a little bit random. So I know there's that, a, a lot of work going on, on the Waipio Peninsula. Is that Navy staging area for what's happening at the Dry Dock? Is that Navy? And, and I'm just curious because I know with the, like, is any, I, I, I went by there and it's a pretty big project and I was just wondering, and it might even be on Fort Island as well. Is any of that going to come over to Ever Side? I was just curious.
Maikai, that you brought that up. It's the largest project since World War II. And the contractor is Hawaiian dredging. And, um, most of the activity is going to be Waipio Peninsula and, uh, in the shipyard, it's going to go back and forth. So it shouldn't affect Kamehameha Highway and the freeway and all that. We try to do our best to eliminate the traffic from our roads, especially during peak hours. And, um, let me see, what else? And you're right, it's going to be a lot of people, 2,500 employees. Most of that is local and that's pushing billions into our local economy. So this is all good stuff. The reason the presentation was brought over here because we hit, uh, neighborhood boards where they had issues with the road, like Waipahu, Pearl City, IAS Salt Lake. But if you would like to have more information, if you would like to have a presentation, let me know and we'll just get it on the agenda. Okay? Just let me know.
Is Dragados dredging in Oriana? Got it. Adventure. Got it. Question?
Yes, so, um, when people call the Navy number, are they told that they can have their water tested? Or do they have to ask? And the reason I say that is because there's a lot of new people coming, you know, always coming in and out in the Navy. And are they definitely told that they will test their water? Because I've been told that they are not offering that.
Okay, um, yes, so Chair, I'm not really sure about the vague, you know, the people who aren't saying or anything like that. Um, but the Navy and the housing offices and all the ones who are on the Navy water system, whether they're businesses or whether they're residents, um, or whether they're workers coming on base, um, they're all offered that information. They're told that, um, that they can have it checked. And, uh, that's why I provided that website. Um, because we want to make sure that every, that everything's above board. Everybody's trying to be, trying to do the right thing. Um, the, you know, everyone's aware that, uh, things were messed up a couple of years ago. So trying to do the right thing.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The other issue we have is there are people, um, in the military that are afraid of retribution and have had retribution against them when they have brought these water issues up. And we have asked the Navy to come up with a new written procedure that said they will not do this to anybody who brings up the water. So far, it brings up a water issue and is in, you know, the Navy or the military because we have had retribution issues. Uh, so far, the Navy has not answered that question. That's another one of the 122 questions we have for them that they have not answered. So there is a real issue with even people that, you know, are got testing from other places. They're afraid to come forward because of this retribution.
Okay, just got off, end of the question because we're going, you guys are going to dialogue. You guys can go offline and dialogue after, but you can answer that. No, 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 no. It's really only one question per stuff, but you can answer that second question that you have. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to give you a little more, but then if I keep on going and going, we're going to, the meeting is going to go forever. So Danny, you have anything for the second question?
Yeah, all, all I can really put out is that there's policy in place, um, that people aren't going to be, you know, retribution or bringing up something that's, that's wrong. So there's, there's already policy in place.
See, it's not being followed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tara, you got something? Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, uh, and you, you just actually said it right now. You said that things went wrong two years ago, but technically it's still happening today. As you heard, my question is, they, you said they, you, they can ask for testing for the water, but what happens after? So we just, you know, personally delivered, we did a water distribution. Can there be a water truck available? Since you know now that the Navy water line is still, you know, contaminated, that one gallon that leaked on October 14th? And again, will there be water distribution drives from the Navy for those housing that are found to have high elevated, uh, levels of contamination of their water in their homes? What is a solution to providing water for these families? Because again, it's still the community providing for the community. Mahalo.
Um, yeah, not really sure what the question was, Chair, but I can say that, um, all the, uh, water tests are online and the public can see. Yeah, there's, there's no contaminated water on the, uh, Navy water line and, uh, that's publicly available.
All right. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to US Army?
Our good evening board, um, Chair and community members on behalf of General Evans and Sergeant Major Haney to all the veterans in the Ever Beach community. Happy Veterans Day tomorrow and, and please enjoy the weekend. So a couple of notes from the United States Army for the month of November. First, we will be having our next job hiring fair on November 28th at the Airport Honolulu Hotel. Uh, this event will start at 8:30 and end at 2:00 PM. Uh, this event is open to the public. There will be job offers and provisional hiring the day of the job fair and advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com. Second, the, uh, 25th Infantry Division will be executing JPMRC, which is Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center Exercise 2401 from November 1st through the 10th. Uh, it is scheduled to conclude tomorrow, uh, on this island and the Big Island. Uh, during this time, residents will experience increased military convoy traffic on the roads and military aircraft overflight. The majority of military trading locations are the, are on the northern portion of Oahu and some central island. However, residents will still see troops traveling to and from the training areas. Uh, next, we have, uh, the wildland fire suppression efforts, just for everybody's awareness. The United States Army provided air support to the Honolulu Fire Department with a UH-60 Blackhawk and a CH-47 Chinook helicopter for water bucket drops to help contain the Milani Malka Wildland Fire over the course of, um, the three days from 31st October through the 1st of November. And then lastly, we got a couple of events coming up. First, the Veterans Day Ceremony at the National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific at Punch Bowl on Saturday, November 11th, starting at 10:00 AM. Uh, second, we have the Veterans Day Weekend Warrior Barbecue Championship Festival. It's a two-day event at Fort DeRusi, uh, and that starts at 10:00. And then the Waikiki Holiday Parade, the Army will be participating on, in that on November 25th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Depending on your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions for the community? Seeing none, thank you very much.
I just have one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, go Army, beat Navy.
All right, and thank you for your service. Okay, moving on. Um, Mayor's Rep, oh wait, sorry, US, uh, Ed Case, I don't think Nestor's on. Okay, we're going to move in on to Mayor's Rep. Um, Keha is not here, but she left the mayor's report already, really quick. I got three minutes. Here we go. This month's highlights for the mayor's newsletter, affordable housing updates across Oahu. Uh, county mayor's tours Lahaina, wildfire zone, a million dollar grant for art, for art on Oahu. Auto way on, uh, Oahu's climate strategy, new city services available in Kapule. Okay, um, moving on to sign relocation. Chair Tynanis is requesting that all, not some signs of the existing traffic control signs move closer to the curb, uh, where possible, and that's on Renton Road. We had a, a concern from the principal from Ever Beach Elementary. Uh, DFM, uh, Poppa PP, sorry, Poppa PP Road, my mind going cuckoo. A Division of Road Maintenance, DTS, uh, legal paint and sign work order. 14358 to relocate one stop sign, one parking, no parking sign and one directional arrow sign as part of, as part of the relocation of signs. Uh, the non-compliant sign posts are required to be, uh, replaced at trigger the, or that triggered the State Public Utilities Commission Underground Utility Escavation Clearance, 811 call before you dig. Although not indicated on the PSWO, the pedestrian sign or state law sign will also be replaced. Work is scheduled to be completed by the end of the 2003. Relocation of the signs will be needed to assess the DTS and separate PSOW would be needed, issued. What had happened was we had the concern, the signs are about a foot and a half in on, on the sidewalk. Kids are passing, so if there's a bike or a wheelchair on there, the kids got to step onto Poppa PP Road to get out of the way and that's onto oncoming traffic. What they did was had three signs there and moved it from the sidewalk towards the road about four inches. They cut the sign and replaced it four inches away towards the road. And I was like, what the? So they're going back and trying to ask if they can relocate it into the bushes, you know, into the dirt, you know, off. So, yeah. Okay, previous month's question response, sidewalk safety. Greenland raised concerns regarding the eight signs. So we're talking about middle of sidewalk on Poppa PP Road. It's causing problems, especially with those kids now riding bikes, no school. Greenland noticed the kids had to ride their bike off the curb because elderly gentleman on a scooter was coming up, did not have nowhere to go. So as he came off the road, a truck was coming and clipped him as a passenger, with a passenger side mirror. Greenland noted that is not enough room for safe route, uh, to school. Greenland, uh, is suggesting removal of the signs in the middle of sidewalk, putting them on the grass so that the sidewalks more freely. Yeah, more freely. Okay, next one, DTS respond, DTS issue work order. Sorry, give me one more minute. Uh, yeah, work order reference paint sign, uh, PSOW, Department of Facility Maintenance is to relocate, remove someone's existing, uh, existing sign controls, uh, closer to the curb. Possible, like what I just said, and they just moved it three or four inches to the left, towards the road. Uh, okay, next one is, uh, R1 Water Rogers asks if there was any way for Westlock Estates Fairway, elderly, Acing Park and Kapapapui can be hooked up directly to the R1 water system so the golf courses do not have to worry about the Westlock communities and the golf courses can do their own thing. Uh, DFM's response is connection to the irrigation system for Westlock Estates, Westlock Fairways, elderly housing, Acing Park and Kapapapui Park would require a capital improvement project administered by a DDC and a, and consulting, consultation with the Board of Water Supply that manage the R1 water system. And if you guys have any other, uh, concerns for the mayor, again, fill out those little half sheets, get it there, we get it to the mayor and a proper city official. Okay, we're moving on. Councilmember District 1. Andrea Tupoa.
Aloha Chair. Yes, I am. Thank you. Um, thanks for reading that. I, I, I'm going to have to follow up with Committee Chair Gauss about that, uh, golf course issue that was brought up. So I, I did attend its committee meeting. Thank you for allowing me to come. I scheduled the meeting with DES, which is the entity in the city over the golf courses. So maybe we can just flesh out what was just read. But I have super awesome news. I almost want to say nothing else besides this. I just got news today that, um, the mayor released the 2.7 million for Oniula. So we'll be coming up with the specific plan that, um, Representative Alcos and Committee Chair Alexander Gauss and I, um, as well as Keha came up with. So stay tuned, guys. They even have some ideas on how we could possibly bring in a bathroom that won't require the permitting because it's a, a mobile one. So we're going to try to do whatever we can that will be expeditious in this year and not going to last like five or seven years to get it implemented. I did give the board members and my staff member Kika's in the room if you have questions about Bill 57 and 58. This specifically relates to game rooms. And there is a special neighborhood board hearing next Tuesday with five neighborhood boards, I believe, that are all having, uh, a meeting about these two bills. So read through it if your, um, board wants to take a position in support or ask me any questions. Specifically, it's giving HPD more tools to crack down on the actual owners and landlords. I also gave some information on upcoming transportation projects. And we do have a crime town hall on December 5th in regards to the game rooms as well as, um, crime just in general on the west side. And anyone is welcome to come in person or you can tune in online. I will be at the Verona Village Meeting, which is going to be an update from the developer for the community next Thursday at 6:00 PM. And I did want to thank, um, Haseko for inviting me to, uh, judge the talent show that they had a few weeks ago. And that's it. So I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yeah, John Clark, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for all that you do. I know you do a lot in the community and, and, and putting a focus on, uh, on, on this, uh, on the crimes that we've been seeing. I, I think that's awesome, uh, to dig deep. Uh, the Oniula Beach thing, I mean, that's, that's awesome, uh, upgrading how Bush. And I, I know the parish community is very, been very involved in that. Uh, my question is really about the gaming. Uh, I, you know, I, I understand we want to give more tools to HPD. Uh, and, and I did look into this a little bit. I understand the fines associated with it, uh, daily and, and being levied towards the, the, the property owners themselves. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of puzzled on a couple of different things because we seem to be putting more and more resources towards, towards this. And can we, I guess my question is, how do we, uh, put a referendum to the residents of Hawaii and ask them if they want to legalize gambling? You know, there, there's been, and let me finish. So there's, there's been questions about, uh, how do we, um, expand the, uh, the economy here? And, and, you know, we have tourism here and that, you know, we have the military here and we have, you know, a few other things that drive the economy here. There's been discussion over the years about, about adding legalized gambling, whether it be the lottery or, or, you know, a ship offshore or something like. There's been discussion over the years about about adding legalized gambling, whether it be the lottery or or, you know, a ship offshore or something like that. Um, that that could potentially bring in more tourists and and you could, you know, we could set it up in a way that it doesn't. As some have proposed that it would harm residents. So how do we take that to the public instead of just letting a select few decide that we should or should not have gambling here?
Well, it's definitely a state legislature question, so you can review that with your state representative and state senator, what their position is on that. It's been discussed multiple times at the state ledge. There is um, there was a proposal a few years ago for DHHL to build one at Hawaiian Homelands where Kamakana Lee what Alii is. And the public heavily opposed it and it's a long story how that happened, but it's not within the city realm, but I will say this. That when we're talking about game rooms, we're not talking about the fear of gambling. So a lot of game rooms that we have in there, it's heavy arms trades, it's some trafficking, it's a large quantity of money, it's drug dealing. So a lot of people ask that like, oh, what's so bad about the fishy game or gambling? I I do think that that is the lower level um activity happening inside the game room. The higher level activities is obviously the amount of cash that they have in there. So a lot of the game rooms that got get shot up is because of the cash in there and the confrontations that happen in the game room is always over money or drugs. In fact, the stabbing that happened in Onakuli was over drugs and I'm not saying these guys are related to game rooms. But when you have an illegal operation like that, that's usually an illegal building, squatting in a house, doing it in a commercial building where it's not allowed. You're definitely doing more than just gambling in there. So I I do want to just call it a game room. And that this is not about us stopping gambling, it's actually about all the illegal activity, including increased shootings that happen around game rooms.
Okay, thank you for that thorough response. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Apola. Thanks for uh, Councilmember Apola, thanks for sharing that great news about the funds being released. And I I did want to recognize uh Councilmember Tolo as well. I know both of your your solicitations jointly probably helped pressure that. So I just want to recognize you both for that. Um, really good news, I think. I I don't know if you're at the last meeting, but I was talking about uh doing a a letter writing campaign to pressure the mayor to release those funds. I think now that those funds are released, I'm gonna, we haven't started it yet, so I'm gonna switch that over to. And I say this because I'm I'm not expecting our next parks meeting until early twenty twenty four. And so I'd say in the meantime, what I'd like to do is get some letters out to the mayor about pressuring the D. Him for him to pressure the DDC to actually start developing the plans. And so I I know you mentioned some things about portable, so maybe we can be in contact about what I actually say in that letter. Because I I just want to make sure, because I know funds can get released, but if they're not applied, they they lapse, right? So I want to get the mayor doing whatever has to happen next. So that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Director, I think Director Thielen's idea, um, Board Member Gaus is to do something that's going to be completed by June. Because we don't want the funds to lapse, so I'll keep you in the loop because they're gonna write a letter on what they're proposing. And I think they might have showed Representative Alcos already the idea. And yes, thank you for shouting out Councilmember Tola. Definitely love working with him.
Thank you. John?
Yes, thanks, Councilmember Apola, on especially uh for all this great report. My question is Verona Village, can you, is that meeting gonna be a public meeting?
Yeah, they had it out in um the garage area, so anybody was allowed to come to it. And it's just gonna be an update from the developer on the recent negotiation between the city and them to proceed with work.
Garage area, what were we talking about?
Um, maybe, yeah, it's in Verona Village. Maybe Augie has the address on him. I don't have it on me right now. It's just at one of the residents' homes and then they set up chairs inside the garage area where we all sit.
And the date, real quick, because I missed it.
Next Thursday, six PM. So I believe it's the sixteenth.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Any questions for the community? Seeing none. Thank you, Councilmember.
Aloha.
Moving on to Councilmember District nine, Augie.
Thank you, Neighborhood Board, our members, and I, yeah, I like working with the Councilmember Tupola also. Come on, uh, like Mr. Bautista said today and the last three days at the Amvets. That the call challenge, a lot of veterans was out there, uh, very encouraging time for our community. I hope this thing grow to where we can attract more people to come and 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 be a world class event. So good stuff on that. Verona Village, I don't know the address, it's right smack in the middle, John, and it's public. Uh, it's basically, uh, it was the, it's turned over to the contractor, so it's gonna be moving forward. So that's a good thing, right? Over what, almost three decades of people waiting, so that's a good thing. Uh, let's see, give you guys an update on the R one water issue at the Sing Park. So we found out that four out of the six irrigation pumps at Westlock Golf Course uh are commissioned. So the CIP funding is in uh to restore six pumps. And I'm hoping, they saying that the anticipated project to be completed by the summer of twenty twenty four. Okay, so let's keep our fingers crossed, maybe earlier, I'm hoping. Uh, let's see, thank you to the fifty, fifty or more volunteers that came out this past Saturday to help us paint the beaches. Thank you, John, uh, and Officer Rowling was out there and a whole bunch of community members. What was awesome was a lot of kids, a lot of kids that came out painted, uh, cut the grass, uh, fill up holes. And that's, that was super encouraging for our community. So thank you to everybody that came out to help out. And uh, thank you to all the veterans watching, all the veterans here in the room. We appreciate you. Thank you so much for uh your service. This is the last Neighborhood Board, so I wanted to say uh, have a wonderful new year, everyone, and I'll see you guys in January. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yeah, John Rogers, go ahead.
I I just want to thank you for that uh Ever Beach um workday because you guys organizing it. It was, it was a good way to bring the community together and I I really thought we did a lot of work. I mean, in a short time, so thanks a lot for setting that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any, okay, Julie, go ahead.
Is it the same meeting address as it was in August seventeenth?
No.
A different one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Okay, go on.
How's it, Chair?
Augie.
Um. Puloa Park, the big one.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any situation why the grass is dead out there? You know, I I just came from Vegas. I came from one desert. Their parks is unbelievable and it's in a desert, you know, and this is real grass. Why Hawaii cannot get that? Okay, I'm just pushing for um taking care of our field and if it costs money, let us know.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Heard that, right? In our uh, our next neighborhood, uh, our next little meeting with parks.
So I can, I can answer why that, so the, right now, that Puloa, Ever Puloa Park, District Park, the big guy. Is um, it it uses R one water straight off the pipe. And what is wrong is their booster pump is broken. And so not having a booster pump, they don't have any pressure to be able to run the irrigation system. So essentially the irrigation, what I was told is is off. It's just not even.
It's spotty right now, it's just kind of sparse, yeah.
Yeah, it's a short, yeah, because there's not enough pressure in the system.
Just follow, so there, it's the brain of this big, this big apparatus and they're, they said they're current, in that parks meeting that we held. A month and a half ago that uh they were talking about that they're in the process of, they actually already have the con, the contract out to try to find the group that's gonna repair that, so.
Okay, so close, David, I'll let you know when it uh, when it goes through, but they're hoping to get it by summer twenty twenty four.
Thank you. I like condemned that park already. That's crazy, the kids playing in there.
Only place I know get cuckoos.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the community? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Happy New Year.
Okay, moving on. All right, okay, moving on to Border Water Supply. Kelsey.
Good evening, Board. I'm Kelsey Lee with the Board of Water Supply. I have two main breaks to report. On September thirteenth, there was a six inch break at nine one five two four Hulea Place. On October sixteenth, there was a twenty inch break at nine one one six zero one Malio Street. For our general water announcements, we're having our twenty twenty four poster and poetry concert contest. The Board of Water Supply has launched its twenty twenty four poster and poetry contest. And it's open, the poster contest is open to kindergarten to sixth grade. And our poetry contest is open to seventh to twelfth grade. This year's theme is our water, our home. Deadline to enter is February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. For more information, please go to www dot borderwatersupply dot com backslash WCW contest. Any questions?
Yeah, Alex, go ahead.
Hey, I also had a question. It's uh related to the 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 HOA complex earlier with all the water being lost. I'm I'm just curious, like, from the board's standpoint, there's a lot of water being lost directly into the ground. And so I'm trying to understand at what point does it become an issue for, you know, you, for the the agency to deal with that? I mean, aside from, as long as you guys are getting paid or the money's coming in, not you, obviously, but the money's coming in, I understand that's not a problem. But if there's a ton of water going in the ground just being lost, that's a problem for all of us as a community. So I'm wondering if that question can be posed and you can come back with an answer at the next meeting as to what the take is on that. But it's still water being lost, so that's.
If I could dovetail on this comment and maybe even surmise it, I'll clean it up. You are the state's representative and I guess protector of water, is how we, not you, but the Board of Water Supply. So we're just kind of wondering at what point, because it seems like right now the Board of Water Supply doesn't really care. We don't know all the details. Maybe they do, maybe they're working on something different and if they are, then if we could be apprised of that. But at what point do they say, okay, wait a minute, do they step in on behalf of all the residents of Hawaii and say enough water's been wasted? And maybe they invest a little bit of of money in trying to investigate and find out where this leak is coming from.
I'll have to come back with more details, but worst case scenario, we will shut off the water. If it gets to the point where it is just way too much, we will ultimately make that hard decision to just shut off the water. But we don't want to do that. We, you know, that that's part of our mission to provide.
If I could, but and so I, that is a question because I think that would be the lead in to a lawsuit. And 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 that that would be the 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 critical path or the critical point that would then, that force um a lawsuit at that point.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Any other question? Please state your name and your question, please.
My name's Noel Zimdal. I live in the community that is losing water. Um. It's six hundred and twelve homes. My husband and I are one family with three kids. Like my husband said, we have so many kapuna in our neighborhood. Um, the threat of the Board of Water Supply shutting off our water has already happened. It's what triggered the loan. They threatened to shut off water, six hundred and twelve homes in a gentry community, in an Eva community. That's terrible. Like, what are the homeowners supposed to do? And that's why my husband and I came here. To ask, like, where do we go with this? Because suing somebody, making it a lawsuit, unless the lawsuit is against like the Board of Water Supply or the state of Hawaii. Or some other overarching government agency, we're only suing ourselves. Because we are the homeowners. So there is no lawsuit that we see right now. As feasible, but it is the threat that Board of Water Supply is going to shut off our water. That's. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Thanks, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Uh, Department of Education. Rep, uh, Governor Josh Green's rep, Perry, I guess they left there on the chat room. If you guys want to look it up, get it off the chap, off the website. Moving on to Hawaii Department of Transportation Quarterly Report, I guess the quarterly report is not up yet. Burn's not, uh, fun. Okay, moving on to Senate District nineteen, Senator Henry Aquino. Rep. Anyone? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to Senate District twenty, Senator Kurt Vivala, online.
Aloha Chair, aloha Board members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Levania Totofi. Thank you. I am here on behalf of Senator Kurt Vivala. I will be sending the newsletter shortly. Excuse me, sorry. But he does apologize for not being able to appear in person or online.
What is his excuse?
So sorry, I'm just gonna go ahead and speak on the newsletter itself and I will send in the link afterwards. But Senator Vivala was um just with. The RAM Committee on a, on a couple of uh RAM site visits. He also joined in sign waving in Waianae, also in in town. There was also the lights after school event that was celebrated over at the Capitol. And. Another event that he attended, not in person though, was at the UH Cancer Center. This was just a brief legislative visit and was also part of hosting the. Ever Beach Lions Club trick or treating event. If you'd like to sign up for his newsletter, please contact his office at eight zero eight five eight six six three six zero. Or email him at sanfavela at capitolhawaii dot gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Senator from the board? Any questions for the community? Seeing none. Thank, oh, there's a hide. Nathaniel, you got something? Nathaniel, you got it? Right there. Go ahead. You're you're on mute. Sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, aloha Chair, Board members. Um, sorry, my Senator couldn't make it today. He was at a RAM visit. Um, but just letting you know that I do stand by my report as well. Mahalo.
Which which Senator? Sorry about that.
Oh, Senator Aquino, District nineteen.
Got it, sorry.
Sorry about that, Chair. Thank, thank you.
So I guess there's not nothing for Senator Vivala as well. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to Senator Gabbard, Senate District twenty one.
Uh, aloha, can you hear me?
Yeah, got it.
Okay, aloha Chair, Vice Chair and Honorable Members. I'm Nanook Dunne. I'm Senator Gabbard's community liaison here on his behalf. On November second, Senator Gabbard held a joint informational briefing on the status of the Red Hill defueling. The briefing was co-chaired by the Senate Health and Human Services Committee and the Senate Agriculture and Environment Committee. The purpose was for the Joint Task Force Red Hill to update the public and committee members on the defueling of Red Hill. We heard from the Navy Region Hawaii Naval Facilities Engineering Systems Command Hawaii and the Department of Health officials. And you can view the entire briefing on the Senate YouTube channel and I'll drop it in the chat um after uh I'm, after I'm done. Uh, the Senator invites everyone to mark your calendars and join his January Listen Story Community Meeting on Saturday, January twenty seventh. From nine AM to ten AM. The location is to be determined and it will also be on Zoom. And if you'd like to RSVP, you can send us an email to sendgabbard at capitol.hawaii.gov. And I'll drop that in the chat as well. Um, you can also visit Senator Gabbard's YouTube page to view recordings of his past listening stories. Uh, I also dropped a link of the October newsletter in the chat where you can find details on Senator's office updates, community and legislative updates. During the week of September, as Chair of the Senate Agriculture and Environment Committees. Uh, Senator Gabbard spent time touring various agri agricultural sites on the North Shore of Kauai. One of the highlight was was touring uh, was touring what will be Kauai's first food hub, a two-story, three million dollars. Three thousand four hundred ninety square foot center to help small farms by offering production, distribution and marketing services. You can read more about his trip and other events in the newsletter. Also, the twenty twenty four legislation session is just around the corner. Uh, opening day is January seventeenth, so if you have any. Uh, opening day is January seventeenth. So if you have any ideas for legislations, please send an email to the Senator at the email that I'll drop in the chat. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions back to the Senator.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? None. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Representative, uh, District thirty-nine, Elijah, Elijah Peric. Any representative? Seeing none. Moving on to, uh, Representative District forty, Rose Martinez. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to Representative District forty-one, David Alcos.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Um, basically, I've got nothing to report. I just want to say happy holidays in the holiday season coming up. Guys, really appreciate all the hard work and effort you guys doing out there. And um, basically came out to listen to the community and address all the issues and problems. So if you guys do have something during the holidays, you guys got my cell phone number, my office number, call me. God bless, guys.
I just want to, uh, just give a thanks to you, Representative Alcos. I know this is your first term, but uh, I've been extremely impressed by, uh, how well you listen to the community. Uh, you've, um, taken risks on big issues. And, uh, you're, uh, you're a true representative of, of the average person here in Eva Beach. So appreciate you. Big mahalo. And good luck to you, uh, in this upcoming session.
So I gotta buy you lunch after this then?
That's really what this is about. Come to my lunch wagon.
Gotta go zippies.
I'm the dragon boy.
Thank you. Any questions for the community? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to, uh, District forty-two, Representative Diamond Garcia. Seeing none. Okay, moving on to committee reports, parks.
I'll just give a quick one and say that, so we're planning a, a meeting in the, in the new year. Um, in the meantime, I know, uh, we have this checklist that we created, um, a couple of years ago, actually, for the parks to kind of see the state of the parks and update what kind of equipment do they have, what state it's in. John just got through to re, we revamped that, that form. John just went around all the parks and updated them. And we're gonna be reaching out to our, our small hui to, uh, have that updated. And then we'll, we'll hopefully do that at, at the next meeting in January or February and share those results. And I've already sent a lot of, uh, benefits to our park after our last parks meeting. And so hopefully we'll keep that momentum going with this, this checklist process. John?
And I just want to add, uh, I attended the, um, the Board of Parks and Recreation meeting that, uh, this new board has just stood up. Um, that DPR has put together and I'm really impressed with the organization. This is a way for the community to be able to really get in, reach out, be able to, you know, give testimony to a board that's responsible for the maintenance upkeep programs at the, uh, park. You know, they, they, um, they advise the, the mayor and, and, and the, uh, Parks Department. So it's a great way. So just look up, um, Board of Parks, um, uh, the Board of Parks and Recreation. And you'll find, uh, uh, the link and you'll find out when their meetings are and, and if you're interested. They do a Zoom meeting. So you can, you can do virtual or attend. But I, I, I'm really, uh, happy with this outcome. I think it's gonna be a good thing for everybody.
Thank you. Okay, education? Julie? Nothing? Okay. Moving on to transportation, John?
I have nothing to add.
Moving on to Ampo. Anyone?
Ampo, I attended the meeting, uh, last week. Um, we're talking about the, oh, I mentioned this last, uh, last meeting. We're talking about the ORTP, um, twenty fifty, uh, Oahu rec, um, OR, I gotta think about it. Uh, Oahu Regional Transportation Plan, ORTP twenty fifty is a really important plan. So we're working out through the details of how that plan's gonna be structured. Um, and in the future, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for community input. And so I'll keep you apprised when, when you have that, uh, uh, when you can do that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Public Safety, Community Outreach, Homeless Outreach. Anyone? No report. Moving on to Economic Development. Okay, moving on to Climate Change. No report. Moving on to Hawaiian Affairs. Moving on to Military Affairs.
Yeah. Uh, I just announced that, um, you know, in the coming, uh, couple of months, uh, hoping to convene folks and, um, continue to partner with, uh, um, MCBH and, and others on, uh, as they move forward with the testing plan. And we're, our hope is that we can continue, um, you know, through the, maybe through the Military Affairs Committee to be able to provide, um, constructive feedback and, uh, partnership as they move forward with, uh, testing around the range. So hopefully in the next few months, we'll, we'll, we'll provide further updates, uh, through the Military Affairs Committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to announcements. Um, again, uh, we will not have any board meeting, um, in December. We will be taking a recess. So our next board meeting will be in January twenty twenty-four. So happy Thanksgiving, happy Veterans Day, Christmas, New Years. Everybody stay safe and hope to see you in January. Our next regular, uh, board meeting will schedule be for January, uh, twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. Uh, virtually webex and in person at Eva Beach Public Library here. Regular board meetings are broadcast every first, uh, Sunday at six P M and every second and fourth Friday at ten AM on Olelo Channel forty-nine. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.